Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, November 18, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is by Bishop Joe Wilkins from Resurrection Life.
Let us bow our heads. Eternal God in heaven, Lord, as we come before you, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We thank you for allowing us to be in the land of the living. We take nothing for granted, Father. We thank you for a portion of health and strength. We pray your blessings upon your people everywhere. God, we ask that you will give us wisdom, guide us in understanding, lead us in the decision-making processes that it will benefit all, Lord, on tonight. And God, we'll give your name the praise in Jesus' name, we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Any discussion?
Are we, Commissioner Patterson Gladney, is she here? Do we need to?
She's not here.
Strike that, so strike, approve the agenda with that stricken?
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. Next, the community update. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Today we have Diane Rigosi, who is the Executive Director of Senior Services of Ambeur and County. She is here to give an update. I've placed her PowerPoint up on the screen, and when she needs me to, I'm happy to advance to the next slide.
Thank you, Kate. And thank you for allowing me to explain a little bit about what Senior Services does and what we've been doing over the last two years and what our future looks like. So, as you know, the main center for Senior Services is in South Haven. Yay! So, we are very happy over the last two years that we're able to provide this for the South Haven area seniors. We have a walking trail. We have pickleball courts. We have an auditorium for our theater group, and we've also helped the community theater group as well. We have a computer lab for seniors, classrooms, cafe, dining area, a craft closet, lending closet, so we also have medical equipment that we lend out for free, and a card room. So, all of our activities are free with the exclusion of meals that are $5 and trips. Currently, we have nine activity centers besides the one in South Haven, or I'm sorry, with the one in South Haven, and January 1st, we're also adding Casco to our area. So, that's really exciting. We have daily meals, and if you've not seen our menus, then please look them up online or just stop in any time and pick one of our menus and activity calendars up. We're serving about, when we first opened, just a little feedback on that, when we first opened, we were serving, and back at the Baptist Church, about 50 a day. That was a busy day for us. And then we went to like 150, and then we were averaging 200, and now we're between 250 and 300 on a daily basis. We have seven to 10 activities going on every day, a lot of exercise programs that are bringing in just hundreds of people, music programs, we have crafts, we have a theater group, as I said, and we also have a lot of educational programs for the seniors. Our trips, we finally started those back up at the beginning of the year after COVID. We did a Hawaiian cruise in October. We go to baseball games, casino every month, and we went to the Arc. That was a very successful one. And some of these we're doing again next year. So, if you didn't get a chance to do this, please just come on in and sign up for the next ones. I believe we're going to England next year and a cruise over by Canada. Another wonderful thing that we do for our community is that we have volunteer opportunities. So, we have over 250 volunteers, and they help with things like handicap ramps. Today, in November, the end of November, we did a handicap ramp over in Global's for a woman who had not been out of her home in three years. Yeah, so that was pretty impressive. But we, I think this year, we did almost 20 ramps, and the weather held out, so we were able to keep going. Those are at no charge to our seniors, by the way. We get grants for those, and we use your mileage dollars for that. We do a tax program. The American Red Cross meets at our place, and we support them as well. We have our computer lab. Nancy is there, and we have somebody in our computer lab every day for iPhones or any kind of present you might give your grandma, and they don't know how to use. So, here are the numbers for the city of South Haven over the last two years. Over a third of the population is over the age of 60 in South Haven. Of that, 1,779 are members from the city of South Haven. So, that's actually over a third, which kind of surprised me. I'm like, how does that happen? Well, that happens because we also have a lot of visitors in our area and people who are part-time residents. So, anybody that pays taxes in any way can become a member of Senior Services. So, they may have a boat slip, they may have a home that they come during the summer months, but if they're paying taxes, then they are allowed to come to our center. So, that's a pretty good statistic to have over 100% of the people coming. We had 82,000 activities attended by seniors just from the South Haven, city of South Haven. We served them 22,000 meals. We did medical transportation. That's another thing our volunteers do, and we pay them mileage for that. So, we did 243 rides there. We built six handicap ramps, and we did 22 home repairs. And then if we go out to the South Haven township area and go out a little bit further, we're, 14% of that population is over the age of 60, and 1,032 of those seniors are attending our, a part of our programs. We served 49,000, attended our activities, 13,000 meals, medical transportation, tax assistance, that's another big thing we do for free, and we built eight handicap ramps out there. So, I wanted to touch on a little bit about what we're looking to do in our future, in our near future. Those of you who aren't aware, we did purchase recently, about a year ago, the south property right next to our parking lot in the, on the front of M140. And we did that with the intention of finding a developer to hopefully help our senior population with housing. We know that there's a problem. There's some wonderful housing in South Haven for seniors right now, but there's about a one-year waiting list, and we have a lot of seniors that are in need of housing. So, with Samaritas, which is a nonprofit, we are hoping to work with them to build a 53-unit housing facility on that property. They will own it and operate it. We will not do that. That's a little beyond my, my skill set. So, we're going to let them do that, and they will purchase the property from us, and between the two of us, they have kind of the same vision that we do. And so, hoping that we can help their seniors during the day, and then they will have a safe place to go back to at night. We will also have a office in that housing unit where our care coordination program can be housed, and they can help the seniors in their homes that need home help. This is kind of what it looks like. This is the new Spring Lake project that just went up, and they're basing what they're talking to us about on, on the same project. So, it's four stories, 53 units, and this is not gold yet, okay? So, this is, we're in the talks with them about it right now. We're really hoping that it goes through. They do this project through MISHDA grants, and so they're waiting for some of the hoops that they have to jump through to see if this will qualify. If it doesn't, and Samaritas is off the table, then we will continue to look for somebody who has the same type of mission we do, and we will eventually hopefully have housing on that property. So, I just wanted to say again, thank you for your support in the city of South Haven. Specifically, I would like to thank Joe Reiser, who comes to our center every day. Thank you very much for that. And Annie Brown has served on our board for many years, and we thank her for her service. Many of you have been there, and I thank you for all you do for us over there. But I specifically want to thank Kate. Kate has helped us get to where we are today. At the beginning of this project, there were many times when I had to go to other townships and cities and try and justify why we wanted a tax base from them when we were building this big, beautiful place in South Haven. And Kate showed up, and I didn't even know who Kate was. And so, she has been there throughout the whole project, and we wouldn't be where we are today without her. So, I just wanted to thank her and all of you who support us. We are hopefully a shining star in South Haven right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane. I don't want you to sit down before, without my saying something. Not only does Senior Services provide a place for seniors to go to have fun, to play sports, to play cards, to eat, but it's amazing when I, and as you know, I go there a lot. Everyone's happy, from the seniors that are there, but all your employees and your volunteers. Everyone seems joyful. They really do. And it's uplifting to be at the senior center. And I think you create that, call it a corporate culture, in the senior center. So, I want to thank you because it is wonderful. And I look around, I see several seniors in this room that go all the time, and we all enjoy it. So, thank you so much for being the Director of Senior Services. It's a wonderful place. Thanks.
Well, it's a privilege. Thank you. And I would also say Kate and I have actually had conversations about growing up in South Haven and living in this town all of our lives, and how important it is to us that we make a difference here. So, thank you for that, Joe.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. It's time for public comment for items on the agenda, excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes.
Jim Sankowski, 89, North Shore Drive, Bundy's Bakery. It's come to our knowledge that they're reviewing the zoning in South Haven with the master plan. And Bundy's is, as long as I can remember, which is 66 years, there's always been a commercial business in that location. But at this point in time, we're a non-conforming use. And one of the, we're the neighborhood business on the north side, us and north side memories, who, they have a better zoning than we do, and I would hope you would consider fixing our zoning to more accommodate the bakery, and from, as long as Rachel and I own it, and whether we pass it on to our, our family or not, or the people we sell it to, some kind of neighborhood business zoning. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any other comments?
Good evening, Council. I'm Walt Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. I started Neighborhoods Need Neighbors, the grassroots movement, back in November of 2021. And on numerous occasions, I've brought, made attempts to bring to the attention of council solutions to the short-term rental issue in our town. This before you is not short-term rental reform. It's a document created by City Manager Hoser to support eight years of STR zoning, noncompliance, and continued staff nonenforcement. Residents and Neighborhoods Need Neighbors reject this outright. This is whitewashed. This is not reform. City Council should not send it forward to the public hearing, for a public hearing. Residents and property investors require real reform for all stakeholders. Reform that acceptably satisfies Neighborhoods Need Neighbors and short-term rental owners, a middle ground for all. And the things that should be included, NNN Neighborhoods Need Neighbors acknowledges residents must absolutely agree to preserve the land use rights of all lawfully existing short-term rental owners. Yes, Neighborhoods Need Neighbors accepts this. But lawfully existing must be defined as zoning compliant and lawfully registered. The new ordinance must reduce primary neighborhood nuisances that upend the quality of life. This requires enforcement to be real and reliable. Reform must support tourism and ensure that STRs are incentivized in the downtown area, PUDs, and traditional resort areas covered by an overlay. Reform must also gradually restore the social fabric in our neighborhoods. For families and workers, we need housing promoting year-round, a year-round diverse economy, not a seasonal, six-week, whatever. Reform must acknowledge the fundamental promise of the 2016 and 2018 short-term rental ordinances, and that promise is zoning compliance. Zoning-compliant STRs are by far the majority, have nothing to fear from ordinance reform. City Attorney Bloom himself has publicly admitted that the city is aware of maybe 50 noncompliant short-term rentals, short-term rentals that are not lawfully existing. These 50 or so parking and occupancy and accessory building scoff laws are a huge reason why the short-term rental program has failed. Protecting these 50 or so scoff laws should not hold up real reform. It's time to stand up to the bullies and staff mismanagement of the short-term rental program.
You have one minute.
Not give outliers sanctuary and amnesty. It's time to go forward in peace with the city, neighbors, and short-term rental owners. Since nobody seems to care what residents and zoning-compliant short-term people have to say, we've been meeting ourselves to forge a middle-ground ordinance. Yes, there is a proposed ordinance now being floated around called the Middle Ground Ordinance. Neighborhoods supports it. We need City Council to insist that City Manager Hoser stop this rush to pass with something that's not ready, not wanted, and look what is ready and wanted by the residents and majority of stakeholders. It's time to compromise on a city planning, short-term rental solution where everyone gives and everyone gets, so South Haven can get on with it.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Stop.
Consider the Middle Ground Ordinance. Prepared, viewed, hassled over, repaired, whispered around, pickleball by STR stakeholders and residents.
Your time's up.
And this is not it.
Hi, my name is Carrie Weber. My home is at 606 Maple Street. I just had a couple things that I wanted you guys to consider when you're looking at the changes to the ordinance that I felt were maybe misunderstood or whatever. The first one is that, that they were only allowed two, for occupancy, two people per bedroom and no more for extra floor. And I know that one of the owners came up before and said something about people sleeping on the floor, and I think that was misconstrued. No one is sleeping on the floor. We're not putting air mattresses in our homes. But some of these homes, like mine, is 150 years old, and they just don't have a lot of bedrooms, but maybe they have big bedrooms. So, some of the places have bunk beds in one room or double beds in a room. And so, I brought a couple examples just to kind of see what would be if they had allowed two people per floor or even two people above the bedrooms, above the normal bedroom count. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, the other thing that I wanted to bring up was no more than two people per week with the rentals. And I know for me personally, it wouldn't affect me at all from June to August because most of my people are families that come, families with grandparents and that sort of thing, and it really wouldn't make a difference in the busy season, which I'm sure is kind of why that was brought up, because, you know, there's a lot of people in town and that sort of thing. But it would really make a difference in the off-season, from about September until May, when I do have people come that support my cleaners and my lawn people and everybody, all the locals that work for me would be most greatly affected in the off-season, because sometimes I do have two groups, one that stays for four days, one that stays for five days in the off-season, a three-day weekend in the winter. So, I know a lot of times, it's also been said that they don't go to our shops, they don't shop, they don't go to the restaurants, whatever. And last night, when I was putting up the Christmas lights at my house, when me and my husband were done, we were sitting at our fire, our fireplace, and we were reflecting, and I was reading my guestbook. All of these pages are families that have come and talked about how much they love South Haven, every single one of these pages. And I didn't copy for you the pages where they're, talk about how much they love it, because there is, like on the back page, there was where they could write out a paragraph or two. But I did write out, print out, some of the ones where they said they went to the Children's Museum, they went to Clement Times, they went to Taste, they went to the Arcade. Almost every single page in my book talked about them shopping and going out to eat and things, and I think that it's good for people to realize that, that if we cut down on the amount of people that can come in the off-season, and it's not a ton, but all of those people help our shop. So, I just hope that you'd consider that.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we go to the next speaker, I think there was a disturbance in the back with some foul language. If you would like, I can have Sergeant, our interim chief, Carlato, kind of address that situation, but if everything else has calmed down, we should be good. But I do want to make sure, I know this is a topic of, of a lot of interest with a lot of people in the room, but I do want to make sure that we're all having a civil conversation and we're reacting with respect towards each other.
If there's further disruption, then we, we will call interim police chief Carlato.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. Go ahead.
Sure. Kathy Cruz, 212 Superior Street. And I have two concerns this evening, and will repeat some of what Michelle just shared. One is limiting the stays to one term per week, and the second is the reduction of maximum occupancy, hitting home some of the same points. I, I hope that everyone is considering the huge negative impact that these two changes will have on the city and many, many permanent residents that are employed by the tourism industry, without necessarily having a positive impact on affordable housing and year-round jobs. In 2024, our home would have lost eight stays if we could only rent once a week, and these were primarily in the slower months, and when getting additional tourism revenue is crucial for so many. Just doing some very conservative calculations, let's say half of the 672 business STRs also lost eight stays. That would be about 2,700 fewer cleans that our local cleaners do in a year. Say an average clean is 200, which is probably very much on the low end, that's $540,000 in lost revenue for South Haven residents, if you take away those abilities to stay more than once a week. I think that number could easily be doubled to over a million if I was using more realistic numbers. And these are just for the cleaners, doesn't factor in the significant loss of revenue to other local businesses with fewer people coming to the city. I just wonder how many residents will lose their jobs or businesses if this ordinance is passed. And then regarding the occupancy, there are currently 323 STRs that have a max capacity of 12 or more, with the majority of these being five-bedroom homes. If every STR has a max occupancy of just bedrooms times two without the additional allowance, that number would reduce to 51 STRs that could accommodate more than, more than 10 occupants, which is an 84% reduction. Consider how many multi-generational families you would be turning away every year with an 84% reduction in the homes that fit their needs. And with a cap of 12 regardless of bedrooms, you're turning away every family with more than 12 that want to stay in a home. Many of these families have been coming to South Haven for years and make great visitors. Smaller groups mean less money spent in stores, restaurants, and entertainment venues. And same as what Michelle said, I want to clarify, also, we offer enough mattresses to comfortably accommodate all of our guests at full capacity. We care deeply about their comfort, their safety. We would never cram people in or have them sleep on the floors, as has been suggested. So, these two changes, in my opinion, would not create affordable homes. They would not turn STRs into homes occupied by permanent residents or create year-round jobs. The changes would lead to the loss of jobs and millions in revenue, in tourism revenue. I understand that this is also about the impact on neighbors, and certainly very important. I don't want to discount anyone, but it's also important to recognize that the STR hotline data does not show that the current occupancy limits and multiple rentals per week are leading to a high number of complaints. Last numbers that I saw, for the 784 personal and business STRs, there were only 47 valid complaints. That means less than 6% of STRs had a complaint, and if you actually do the calculation on stays, not just units, it would probably be less than 1%. Even if you add complaints occurring outside the hotline, I just don't think the number indicates that there's a need to drastically reduce occupancy and allow only one stay per week, especially when you consider the negative impact that this lost revenue could have on so many. I've heard people say they are for tourism, just not STRs, but these two go hand in hand. People want to stay together in a home with extra space and amenities where they can walk to the beach in town. They do not want a hotel or a campground a few miles from the beach. Tourism is so successful in South Haven in large part due to the beautiful STRs where people want to stay. If you lose the STRs or make them so limited to rent, you lose the tourists and all the benefits that the tourism industry provides. Affordable housing is a national issue.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Affordable housing is a national issue, not just a South Haven issue, and was created in large part by COVID, not STRs. Most homes near a lake, an ocean, the mountains are inherently unaffordable. Homes in South Haven near the lake have sold for over 500,000 without a license. If homes close to the lake likely become, or if homes close to the lake were to stop being STRs, they would still be unaffordable to most and would likely become second homes, which don't provide as much revenue to the city or residents. And STRs certainly are not stopping other industries from coming to South Haven and bringing year-round jobs. Affordable housing is needed, year-round jobs are needed, but reducing STRs or significantly restricting their ability to be rented is not how you accomplish either of these. Keeping tourism alive and strong while we all work together to create affordable housing and more year-round jobs is how South Haven thrives. And I do hope you allow Bundy's to stay, because I love Bundy's. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Rich Green, 408 Eagle Street.
Oh, you need your microphone.
All right. Usually I talk pretty loud, so I apologize. So anyways, I represent Shores Vacation Rentals, and I agree with the last two speakers. I don't think I could have said it better than what they said now, or just said. But what I want to do is say that you've heard me several times now come up here and say that we're trying to find the middle ground, that we're trying to create a coalition where people can come together and find something. We don't agree with this new zoning amendments and ordinances at all. I happened to look at the, the middle ground idea that is floating out there today, and I read through it. I shared it with the CEO, my partner, Amber Berger, and she looked at it, and we both agree that the 74 people that we represent.
Excuse me. Please stop talking in the back row. Okay, please give respect to the speaker. Go ahead.
Anyhow, what I was saying is that we had a chance to look at the middle ground policies that are kind of floating out there in the community. We looked at it today. We spent the last three hours talking about it. And we represent 74 homeowners here. And our 74 homeowners won't flinch. They won't rebuke what's in there. Now, there's some few things that we needed to work on. But I would ask the council here tonight, take a look at that before you pass this stuff, or even before you move this to a public hearing. Let us host when neighbors need neighbors and a couple of other organizations, as we said before, and let us figure this out and bring it back to you in good faith. Let us bring something back that's not going to hurt the middle class that I have heard all of you say you wanted to protect. Like the last speaker said, you bring this down and you limit this, you are hurting the middle class. You're hurting our employees, you're hurting our house workers that come and clean, you're, you're hurting our maintenance guys, the plumbers that we contract with, electricians that we contract with. But we think we can find a solution without you guys penalizing people. And I think you should give us the opportunity to do so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. And yes, you should all get a raise. Thank you for what you do. Before 2016, all short-term rental in neighborhoods was illegal and unenforced. Finally, residents said enough is enough, and the 2016 ordinances were created to regulate the first STRs and only authorized them in detached, single-family homes and duplexes. And from the 2016 Code of Ordinance up to today, zoning compliance, short-term rentals are regulated in the zoning, South Haven zoning ordinance, and nothing in this article shall be construed as exclu- excuse, excusing compliance with zoning requirements. At this past Planning Commission meeting, new reform ideas were added to be sent back for tonight's CC to discuss. Because the fresh ideas had not even been announced to the public, PC sent them back to you for discussion. There was no completed document recommended, nor a vote for CC to schedule a public hearing. This rushed agenda item tonight is terrible city zoning and seems like a desperate Hail Mary, City Manager Gambit, to push this terrible document through at the holidays. This ordinance isn't ready, and City Manager fully resists forwarding the alternative proposed Middle Ground Ordinance Initiative Real Reform to Legal and to Planning Commission, and why is that? City Manager knows the actual process because she has already done it right here. In the year before the 2018 amendments, Planning Commission met 17 times, both in regular meetings and special meetings with Assistant City Manager Hosier, Zoning Administrator Anderson, City Attorney O'Curcio, and with residents and investors in standing-room-only participation, culminating in a final joint session of the City Council and Planning Commission overseen by a City Attorney legal brief, asking and answering all the questions posed by the fears and threats of all stakeholders. It was negotiated, and nobody was 100% happy, but it was negotiated. Zoning compliance was still absolutely required. Go and watch the videos yourself. And a policy and procedure for registration issue and protection of neighborhoods was established. Yeah, it didn't exactly work out great because of all the reasons. And so here we are needing reform again. But at least we should have public input process. This non-starter, non-starter document in front of you, invented mostly by staff and legal and rushed through inappropriately at the holidays, no less, does nothing but provide amnesty for the eight years since 2016 of wrongful registration, zoning, non-compliance, and staff non-enforcement. This will not heal what is broken nor lead to community vitality. It seems obvious. There are two forces at odds here. City Manager manipulates zoning to protect a very few big-money, out-of-town property owners of 20 to 30 oversized, obnoxious party houses with illegal occupancies or lack of onsite parking, or tiny square-foot accessory building or garage apartments. All eight years zoning non-compliant, illegal STRs, pushing for grandfather status so they can forever continue on one side. And the residents and zoning compliant businesses demanding enforcement, quality of life, lasting ordinance reform, and healing on the other. Residents and STR stakeholders have proposed a comprehensive Middle Ground Ordinance, created and negotiated by a broad coalition. City Manager doesn't seem to want to respond, refuses to forward it to Legal or to Planning Commission or to you. Why is City Manager mad pushing this proposed ordinance in front of you that both STR owners and residents alike fully reject, isn't even fully formed, recommended out of Planning Commission yet, to be supposedly put through and made law over a holiday period? Yet you still have not seen or discussed the proposed Middle Ground Ordinance that your entire community, all stakeholders, is trying to get before you. This is only City Manager's fast-train to grandfathering amnesty for the small-moneyed, but neighborhood-ruining zoning non-compliance STRs, a minority, maybe 50 scofflaws out of 791 STRs. Thank you for being here, Attorney Bloom, who himself said publicly that the city is admitting to that number, and eight years of non-enforcement under Hosier's lack of leadership. This is not reform. Instruct our City Manager to stop this whitewashing amnesty, seeking and listen to her city, the residents and investors alike, work with her council, and get a hugely popular Middle Ground STR ordinance that's really, really good, to you and passed by the new year. And yes, you all deserve a raise. Thank you for your service.
Hi, Heather Winter, 721 Woodland Circle. Uh, my husband and I bought a home in the Harbor Club almost five years ago. Uh, we were to use it as a short-term rental. We were both teachers, and my husband was retiring, uh, from Waterfleet. We were looking for a way to supplement his pension. Two years later, I retired as well, and we decided to move to South Haven because we had grown to love the city. During this time, we have hosted families and groups year-round. Just recently, we welcomed a group of women to South Haven that were celebrating a best friend's, uh, battle with cancer that she had won. Uh, this Christmas, we have another family coming to celebrate what will be their dad's last Christmas, and he grew up here and wanted one last time in town. Mostly, though, we have multi-generational families that come to visit, grandparents like my husband and I, their children, and their grandchildren. They come, they have a home base for their vacation, a place for their children to nap. Um, it works well for them. Uh, we recommend restaurants, we recommend stores, activities, photographers, salons, um, Maritime Museum, Lake Arvesta, you name it, we recommend to them. And each one of them will leave a note on our board that we have, what was their favorite. And we usually try and reach out to those places and let them know what our guests have said. Um, each family writes in our guestbook that they have fallen in love with South Haven and can't wait to come back. During the almost five years that we have had our rental, we have met our neighbors in the Harbor Club and have become good friends. We get together as couples, the ladies, we all have a once-a-month get-together. We call us ourselves WOW, Women of Woodland Circle. We have opened our home to one of our neighbors a couple of times when they were hosting their family for a graduation party, and they didn't have room at their own home. When we were looking to buy a home to use for this venture, we specifically chose the Harbor Club because we knew that it was mainly a rental-friendly resort, and it has been. Please fully consider the implication to the proposal to limit rentals to only one per week. One complaint we hear quite often is that during the off season, these rentals remain empty. If we can only host on a weekend and not also open our home during the week, our house will stand empty. As we are now, we host all year, and often more than once a week. Not only that, but consider the staff who clean the rentals. If we only allow once, their pay will be cut in half, and sometimes by third. You're hurting local businesses like restaurants, entertainment venues like Lake Arvesta, golf courses, the Maritime Museum, the Children's Museum, uh, fishing charters, and more. Each of these rely on locals and tourists to survive. South Haven is a tourist town. It has been for a very long time. If you run out people like us, we cannot make ends meet if we're limiting our rentals to once a week. We don't want this town to become a ghost town. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Greer. I live at 42 Delaware Court. I'm also the proud owner of Lake Michigan Linen Services. If you don't know who we are, we're a local business that's been in operation for almost two years now. We relocated recently to Veterans Boulevard into a 13,000-square-foot facility. We provide bedding, towels, and supplies to a variety of lodging in this community. We also do table linens now, and we're commercial laundry. We employ 25 individuals in the summer, most likely more this upcoming summer, and around 10 individuals year-round. Our employees range from the age of 17 to 75. They have diverse backgrounds and flexible schedules. We have a lot of teachers, students, retired folks that work for us in the summertime. And we exist because of tourism and lodging in South Haven. Currently, over 80% of our customers are vacation rental property management companies and vacation rental property owners. We've been able to grow so fast because this community is focused on providing services locally and keeping money spent here. I get very concerned as a business owner, as a full-time resident, as a mom with a kid in the public school system, when I see and hear modifications to rules that affect and may harm the largest industry that we have. When I hear certain individuals in this community and on City Council discuss short-term rentals and only reference the loss to the homeowners themselves, and how it may or may not affect that property owner's revenue or income, I'm concerned about the lack of focus on the adjacent businesses and the community members that proposed changes will, will harm. Modifications such as reducing the length of stay that may prohibit a family who could only afford to come here on a short weekend, or any restrictions to the occupancy of the guests in the home, those all affect the revenue generated and the tourism dollars spent in South Haven as those people go elsewhere. I understand not everyone may be concerned that that homeowner may no longer be able to afford to use their own short-term rental for their own family vacation, because now they have to rent it out those days. Or maybe they won't be able to cover any of their costs and won't be able to someday convert that home into their own full-time resident, like so many often do. So let's not talk about that family in particular, but rather look at the impact it has on local businesses and the families that are touched by that loss in the community. How is it affecting the landscaping companies, the cleaners, the linen provider, the hot tub and pool maintenance folks, those that move the trashcans in and out, the jobs of our local citizens? I'd like to challenge the council to look at what happens with the reduction of people and revenue because of these changes, and tell me how you will supplement that. I don't just mean the lodging dollars. By restricting the amount of reservations allowed per week, it results in a reduction of turnovers, therefore a reduction in services required, a decrease in revenue, and then a decrease in local business and economy. It's a reduction in jobs at all of these adjacent businesses and ultimately residents that are employed in this community. I know this dollar amount is in the millions, and at a time when state legislative action will drastically impact small businesses, and if you don't know what I'm referring to, you can talk to our great Chamber of Commerce about what's going on, this has the potential to cripple many small businesses in this town. I want to know what economic development you are working on to influx millions of dollars to this community to ensure we can still have our boardwalks, our parks, our beach safety, our festivals, our employment, all the things that we know and love about the city of South Haven. How are you going to generate this additional revenue for the restaurants and the stores downtown that rely on these overnight guests every night of the week to sustain them year-round? How are you going to generate the same amount of revenue for this community that is currently being provided by short-term rental owners and their guests? We spend so much time discussing short-term rentals here that I worry we haven't spent any time on these other efforts and these what-ifs. What about all the people that work for me, that work for the cleaners, that do the lawn, that snowplow, that manage these properties, the people that work at the stores and that work at the restaurants? Think of them, and what is your economic development plan to replenish everything that you plan on taking away? Because it is not just the house on your street that you are affecting.
Give one minute.
Thank you. You're affecting the families, the individuals, and the lives that are all associated with our tourism industry. You were elected to be fiscally responsible with the city of South Haven, and we rely on you to have a plan before you hurt our largest industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Anybody else?
Hello. Good, good evening. My name is Carmen Alonso, and I am the owner of Carmen's Cleaning Service. And we are proudly to say that we've been in business for 12 years successfully. Um, we, we started our business off the parking lot in Village Market when it existed. So we are now, um, we have opened our last, um, second location this year, and we have been growing thanks to the, um, city, you know, to the vacation rentals. And this last summer, I was able to, um, employ full-time 55 people, and I'm here to speak for them. Um, 15 of them have become, uh, full-time with me. So if we restrict the, the, you know, the, if we lower the amount of rentals, this will put 30% of my employees down, which I won't need them. And, um, the cleaning itself and the vacation rentals has brought all these ladies an opportunity to, I mean, a lot of them, you know, were on welfare and things like that, and thanks to the cleanings and the constant job that we have, not just in the summer, but in the winter, then, you know, a lot of them had bought their cars, they have secure housing for all these children, they're able to buy food. Um, so I am a witness of that, and I'm very proud to say that, uh, we are very thankful for the, uh, South Haven and all the vacation rentals that have brought a lot of 50-plus families to have employment. And I don't know what they would do, you know, if, if the reduction of rentals would go through. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Susan Peterson. I live at 270 Park Avenue on the north side. I've lived there since 1995, and I have rented since I have retired from nursing to supplement my income. These restrictions that you're talking about would very much hurt the rental industry and very much hurt me specifically and other people. We have a older population here, and people are doing what I'm doing to supplement their incomes. But by limiting short-term rental stays to one per week, it's, it's just not how people travel. I rent for eight weeks, that's it, and then I live 10 months out of the year here. And in those eight weeks, I had one full-week rental. So people come and go, things have changed, and even older people that want the place for a week, they can't get their kids to come for, for a whole week. They're too busy. They want to go here, go there. Um, I understand that two days, can't do that. It should go to bed and breakfast, and it should go to hotels. But to have three- and four-day stays, that's what we get here. Long weekends, stays during the week, people patch things together, they're trying to get families together and all their schedules together, and it's not all one big week. It just doesn't happen anymore. There's also been some talk about adding some hardship clauses for personal STRs, and that would very much benefit people like me and our older, people who are older and retired and trying to keep their homes and supplementing their income. Um, and it would promote us staying in our homes rather than losing that income. So if we could have a personal rental that were six or eight weeks, that would be, that would be good. You know, make rules and limit it, but to have a personal, short-term rental and having hardship clauses and allowing us to rent our homes in season and stay here in this community, it would benefit big time. Um, with the current, with the current clause that you're reviewing, I still don't like the certificate on display. I don't like the parking. We said, you know, five, six people don't travel in a car, it's four. So I think you need to consider that, because I know, I supply my garage, and my neighbors are happy there. They say, oh, you runners, it's great. They open the garage, pull in, it's like you're there. So it doesn't disrupt, you know, the neighborhood. So, but six people aren't traveling in a car. And with the excess of sleeping, I don't want people sleeping on the floors, but if they have bunk rooms in some of these 100-year-old houses, if the fire marshal goes through and says, yeah, there's adequate- and says, "Yeah, there's adequate beds," or the city goes through when you do your inspection, I think there should be allowances for that because we have a lot of 100-year-old homes here. But I don't think anybody should be sleeping on the floor, and I don't think the fire marshal would either. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi. My name is Lisa Stern. This is my husband, Brandon. We love South Haven. We have been coming here for about 25 years, and two years ago, we saw two cottages on Park Avenue that we fell in love with and thought, "You know what? I'm going to salvage them. I'm going to save them." They reminded me of Monroe Park, and I saw so many of these little cottages being torn down and huge houses being built. I said, "You know what? Let's save them." So, we did. We spent two years renovating these two cottages, and we opened them for rentals in April. Since April, we've had over 200 people stay at our cottages, over 50 dogs because we are pet-welcoming, and we are set up to accept dogs as well. We have had great reviews. People absolutely love them. And I'm here today to just talk about a few of the restrictions that I just became aware of, of how many people can stay in our cottages. Our cottages, for example, are 700 square feet. We have had six people stay in our cottages. They're two-bedroom. We have two bunk beds in one room and a full-size bed, and then we have a queen bed in another bedroom. And six people comfortably stay in each of those cottages. And the restriction of just two per bedroom, it wouldn't work for us, and I know a lot of other properties that it wouldn't work for because they are set up to accommodate them. No one is sleeping on the floor. I also wanted to talk about the restriction of how many times you can rent per week. That is huge. I don't know if you guys realize how huge that could be. Our property manager couldn't be here, but she wanted me to express that, if that was passed, she would likely lose her business. She's been here since 2016, and she has been working for us, for our rentals, for other rentals as well. If her income got restricted, if that was passed, she likely would have to leave South Haven and loves it here, loves her business, and wanted me to relay that, and she wanted to be here tonight but couldn't. And the last thing that I wanted to say is, I'm not sure where these restrictions are coming from or what they are solving. That's the thing that I'm not really clear about and don't have an understanding of. What problem are we trying to resolve? And how would these restrictions actually solve that problem? So, before we pass anything like that, I just wanted to let everybody know how they would affect us and our business and people that we employ. I apologize for the way that I'm dressed. We were here all weekend trying to do yard work, clean up, and improve our cottages. And so, we employed people over the weekend to come and help work. We ate at the restaurants downtown. We support the business while we're here. I think that I have been in South Haven more often than I've been at my home, which is in Northbrook, Illinois. But I come here whenever we don't have rentals to keep working on our cottages and keep improving them for the community. And I just would encourage everyone to just think about these restrictions, how they would affect our community, our people working in our community, our visitors that come, and just wanted to put a face to some of the things that we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Erica Villegas, and I first visited South Haven in 2004 when I was pregnant with my first child. He is now 20 years old, and that is when we fell in love with South Haven. We've been coming ever since, once or twice a year, and have continued to bring all of our family, my parents, my grandparents, my family, my aunts, my cousins, to visit South Haven. A couple of years ago, we decided that we wanted to have a home here in South Haven because we were spending a lot of time here in South Haven. And so, we found a great little house at 563 La Grange. We used a local realtor. We spent a lot of time and money employing handyman, general contractors, roofers, a window installer, deck person, I mean, you can name it. We put a lot of money, a lot of hard work ourselves. My husband and I spent almost every weekend that summer here, working on our home, and have continued to do so. To help us supplement some of the expenses, we started renting our home specifically to family and friends, to some of my clients. I practice real estate in Chicagoland. And so, we wanted to have them come and see South Haven for themselves. We look and we hope to continue to have our home because we would love to retire here in South Haven. We love spending time. We have maintained a membership at the Children's Museum ever since we purchased our home. And I know from speaking to my cleaning person, my handyman, that was just there a couple of days ago fixing some issues, that this will hugely impact their own income, that this will have unintended consequences that we think that are affecting renters coming into the city. But the reality is that South Haven grows, and it continues to be the place that it is because of the tourism. We know that many families, like myself, we came to South Haven, you know, when we were without kids, for myself. I always looked for alternative accommodations to be able to cook breakfast or to have coffee before running down downtown to get breakfast or to get coffee or to go to the beach. And so, I hope that we also are thinking about what the economic impact will be, not only to other small businesses, but also to all the people that are employed that serve as some of those short-term rentals. The other thing that I would love to make sure that sometimes decisions are made without looking at the unintended consequences, and also just to pass a law that can have a great impact. So, today, I'm here just urging city council to please reconsider the changes of the occupancy, of reducing the stays, and that we all want to continue seeing South Haven prosper. We all want to continue spending time here. So, thank you.
Hi. I'm Gail Bindy, 130 Michigan Avenue. My husband and I have owned the house for 27 years, and back to when our sons were little babies. They're now fully grown. Our parents are older, and some family members now live out of state in various parts of the country. But over the years, South Haven has been a second home to us. Both our family and other guests of ours have had commemorated anniversaries, weddings, celebrations of life, as the other woman mentioned. We had some people stay who came for a celebration of life for a member of their family that was lost, and then joyous new beginnings with births of little ones. And throughout this time, we've tried to be good neighbors. We are not a party house. We are discerning with the guests that we've had and the visitors. And we have plenty of parking, and this has all been despite constantly changing rules. So, one example I'll give is a few years back, when we were asked to, in order to pass inspection, to install window guards on the second floor. Menards didn't carry them, neither did the hardware store. We couldn't find them on Amazon. We finally tracked them down, had them installed. Only this year, to pass inspection, to have to remove them. So, that's just one small example. You know, but we've tried to, again, play the rules. We, as many others have mentioned, have employed cleaners, gardeners, painters, electricians, had a new roof put on a couple of years ago, which then resulted in some unwelcome visitors, varmints, and so then we had Vamus Varmint Company out. So, you know, all of these contributing to the local community. All this said, we're very concerned about the change in the climate of the community. We've noticed it. Our guests have noticed it. And in many ways, it's become unwelcoming and hostile. One example I'll give, in June of this year, we were at the home, and when my husband was putting our luggage back in after the weekend, a gentleman came from around, who, he came from around the corner, approached my husband and said, "Are you renting that house?" And my husband said, "No, I'm the owner of this house." And he proceeded to complain about the renters, to which my husband, you know, he just, he could have started a fight, but he just said, you know, "Hey, I've rented, I've owned this house for 27 years, and, you know, we really enjoy meeting people from all around the country." And, you know, just left it at that. But we want South Haven to be inclusive and to be friendly, welcoming place that we have come to know and love all these years. And like I said, our situation has changed just because of aging and life and people's life stages in our family. So, I mean, we'd like to ask the council for us to continue to be able to rent it as we feel necessary from year to year based on our needs, and, you know, so that we can continue to keep it in our family. I think there's a bit of a perception...
Give one minute.
Okay. Perception and reality that the STR owners are making gobs and gobs of money. We're not making gobs and gobs of money. Again, we're just trying to cover our expenses so that we can keep the house in our family. We don't believe that further STR restrictions will provide affordable housing, nor will a house sitting vacant help the local economy. So, we'd just like to ask that you please shift your focus away from imposing further restrictions towards other ways of economic development.
Hi. I'm Sarah McHugh. I live at 429 Superior Street, and I'm here with my husband, Sean. We are business license owners of short-term rentals. I'm here today because we're an anomaly. We live here full-time. We rent April to November 1 because we live in our boat in the summer. We don't make gobs and gobs of money. We're lucky if we can pay our taxes, go on a okay vacation, and pay for our slip. That's it. If we can save a little bit of money, that's even better. Our families, we have found a niche. We have found a group of people that are traveling between softball, baseball, dance competitions, theater things, so they stay for three or four nights because they're in between from Chicago, Detroit, Grand Rapids, and South Bend. And because of that, we've gotten lots of referrals because we're easy to work with. They can come in and out whenever they want, and a lot of times, Sean and I greet them and thank them for their business and coming. We employ local folks to take care of our heating and cooling, our lawn care, pest control, even appliance repair, and everything in our home has been purchased locally right here. So, we have made a direct impact right here in South Haven. I travel 100 miles a day to work in Grand Rapids. My husband drives to Portage two days a week to work. We choose to live here. Do I have to do the short-term rental? No. But I like to. We have so many families, we even have pictures from our camera. They go, "Hey, can you send us that Ring cam?" You know, because everybody was together for that final shot, and we want to use it for our Christmas card. Sure, here you go. We're active within our community. I used to be a member of the zoning board, and I left my post. I enjoyed it very much, but it was simply because I was harassed being a zoning board member by NNN group members. I know that we wear the scarlet letter STR on our chest, and we all laugh about it, but it's true because I know I'm being recorded. People are watching. I've been harassed getting pedicures at Tom &amp; Amy's at the grocery store. We too have had a gentleman come into our own yard harassing us because we are short-term rental owners. Yeah, we live here full-time. It's crazy to me. It's, and what's crazy to me is that, you know, here we're doing it to short-term rentals. I work with lots of local businesses throughout west Michigan, and when I found out about this meeting, I actually laughed out loud. I go, "Really? Maybe we should call all the builders in town building all the buildings and say, 'Ah, ah, ah, you're only allowed to build one.'" Or, "How about the hair salon? Let's limit how many of those." "Oh, sorry, you can only do one haircut." It's, we are getting picked on, and it's stupid. We're better than this. We also need to be nicer to each other. I mean, good grief. All kidding aside, Sean and I choose to live here. We know many of you on the council and many people out here in the audience today, we agree and disagree, but for goodness sakes, we've got to come together, and I'm tired. The group, short-term rental group, I said, "You know, I don't know if I want to speak because I don't want to get harassed." So, it will be interesting to see what happens at the grocery store this week, to see if anybody's going to bother me because I'll just smile and I'll just nod. But in the end, I ask, please don't limit number of people in rooms. Actually, we have a bunk bed room...
Give one minute.
Thank you. That has a couple of bunk beds in a full, and every year, we have multiple families say it was great that all the little cousins could be together because they love that. And as well as far as weeks, like I shared at the beginning, by limiting the number of stays and weeks, that would hurt too. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Roger Olet, 98 Clinton Street, resident here since 1989. And restrictions, ordinances, STRs. I spoke to this council back in 2016, trying to understand what we're trying to fix. We're trying to correct a problem that it's never really been articulated. I understand now we have the fox watching the hen house, the hate group has a hotline to try to determine what the problem is, but since 2016 to now, I still don't understand what the actual problem is with the renters and the rental condition in this city. I bought in 89, and you talk about affordable housing. I could have bought the block up if I had the money. Every house was under $100,000. Nobody was buying a house then. You know why? Because there were no jobs. And today, nobody's buying a house here, a family, because there's no jobs, or there's very few of them. Yes, South Haven's been a tourist town since the 20s. It had manufacturing up into the 60s, but we have to recognize what we are now. We're a tourist town. And what is the problem? What have the renters done? Like I said, I've been here since 89, and all around me have been renters. I didn't really rent my house the last few years. I retired and need the extra income. That's another story. But all around me were rentals, grandparents, parents, and their kids. Oh, my God. What are they doing? Nothing. Residents cause more problems than these tourists. And I still have never seen the data, and I don't take anything from that hate group hotline. But anyway, what is the problem? These are grandparents, parents, and kids. This city needs the tourism. As I said, the affordable housing, put some manufacturing in here, and housings will go down. But somebody made the point here earlier, the lake properties, they're not going to go down. This is America. And why does anybody care what I do with my home? Why is it anybody's business? We have enough ordinances and laws in this town for noise, occupancy, and parking. We don't need any more. If somebody's breaking that law, enforce it. God bless you. No problem. I usually can talk a hell of a lot longer, but a lot of people have made the points for me. But anyway, thank you very much.
Emily Westling, 765 St. Joseph Street. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Emily, and I'm here as a Ward 1 resident of South Haven and a property manager at Anchor Point to express my strong concerns about the ongoing discussions surrounding additional short-term rental restrictions. These restrictions, whether... These restrictions, whether they involve further limitations on occupancy maximums, reductions in the number of permits, or changes to how properties are rented, would have significant and far-reaching consequences for our community. For example, our company recently hired a South Haven resident as a full-time, salaried employee with benefits, a life-changing opportunity for someone who hadn't had a full-time job in over 15 years. He's thrilled to be a part of our team and his role allows him to make meaningful contributions to our company and the local economy. We also work with two local startup cleaning businesses that rely on regular turnovers to sustain themselves, especially through the slower winter months. Additional restrictions that limit occupancy or rental frequency could directly impact their income and jeopardize their ability to stay in business. Beyond the immediate impact on workers, these restrictions would hurt the broader community. Fewer stays means more vacant homes, something I think we can all agree isn't good for South Haven, no matter your perspective on short-term rentals. Vacant homes reduce neighborhood vibrancy, result in less visitor spending, and ultimately harm downtown businesses that rely on tourism to thrive. As someone who moved to South Haven just last year for the opportunities created by the tourism industry, I'm deeply concerned about how these proposed limitations would impact not just my livelihood, but the broader economy of our town. These types of restrictions are anti-small business and discourage investment in our community. I also believe that anyone paying taxes on property in South Haven should have the right to obtain a personal short-term rental permit. A fair and balanced approach ensures that property owners can use their homes responsibly while contributing to the local economy. I urge you to carefully consider the real-life impacts of any new restrictions. Decisions like these have long-term implications for our workforce, our local businesses, the vibrancy of South Haven as a whole, and most importantly, people like me who are building a life here. Thank you, thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Emily.
Hi, Typhy Noe, 83 St. Joseph Street, South Haven. I've been a part of this community my whole life, 1985. I'm not of the retirement age, but just to reference, I've been here since I was three months old. I had someone reach out to me after the words I shared at the zoning meeting to say they were fighting for their rights, children's rights, to live in peace. I want to provide context at City Council that I, while I'm a short-term rental business permit holder, I use those funds to not only take care of my mother, who lives in the home, in, who lives in the home I grew up in at 212 South Haven Street, but my uncle who lives nearby on Kalamazoo Street. In addition, I'm able to offset those costs of owning two long-term rentals provided at under $1,000 a month in city proper with the short-term rental profit. Not only have I supported my parents and uncle to maintain their lives in South Haven, I've hired this year alone approximately $100,000 worth of labor, not including materials, of a local contractors, people I went to high school with to work on restoring silo models, a dilapidated workshop garage into a single-family residence, and I'm here fighting for their rights to live. In fact, I take my corporate salary and I inject it locally. We're here more than half of the weekend, spending $200 to $300 a weekend. Live in peace captures my attention because I would say the majority of the people asking for these changes have the flexibility and availability to afford to relocate to this town. I grew up here, I went to high school here, graduated, I was Jeff's teacher's aide my senior year. I come back almost every summer. I distinctly remember during my childhood summer days, the streets were packed with cars trying to access the beach, from people who came for the day to enjoy Lake Michigan. Short-term rentals have actually changed that because those people rent houses now and don't block the roads. Mary Hosey, you made a comment to me during the zoning meeting that you were coming here to visit while you lived in Kalamazoo. So, you sitting here and coming down on tourists is extremely hypocritical. You're limiting people enjoying our town when you had the full right to enjoy it earlier in life, and that's incredibly unfair. If you want a sleepy beach town, my friends, what do you think happened in 1920s? I did a homecoming float showing pictures of people visiting this town. When I was in grade school, I remembered this community. I remember all that this community was built on. Joe, I remember what your house looked like when I was 10 years old. They tore it down. We welcomed the change to improve that front structure, that front area of the lakefront. I remember what it was. It was a moldy building. We were happy to see it go. Could I move my mom out of this community? Sure. It would make my life easier, but I don't because she loses her identity, she loses her friends, and she loses her autonomy. We have kept the nail prices low, the nail salon prices low, so that she doesn't run away her local clients, but we're able to make money off tourists. The changes in these ordinance for one term per week limit her ability to afford a life here. I want to give her this independence. That independence and peace comes from her ability to rent houses and give a longer life here in the home that we restored seven years ago. And we used $20,000 of labor from this community, but we used our own hands to do that. I don't disagree. We should allow people to safely visit our town. We should have a cap, but eroding property rights of the people who made investments and rely on the profits to survive causes pain. Given the current-day economy of South Haven, there needs to be a balance. That balance, that backstop is not zero. It's not going to provide instant gratification to some people, but that is the only path to find balance. Trying to reduce the number-
Give one minute.
Trying to reduce the number of people coming to South Haven by leasing minute details is just unrealistic. Instead of advising people like me who might be willing to invest in offering long-term housing to obtain business short-term rentals, those are ideas of us being a community and being smarter and creating programs reward versus restrict and takeaway rights. I spoke in 2018 to investigate forward-thinking businesses to revitalize this community. Bringing tech companies here, bringing automotive industries. I work in corporate business development that could have brought companies relocating here for COVID and injecting jobs here. Nothing was done off of my advice. Nobody reached out to me. I had given my information, I'd given, given anything for any of the City Hall council members to reach out to me to talk about those opportunities. COVID was an opportunity to relocate small, those small startups here.
Your time is up. Thank you, Typhy.
I do want to provide you the end.
Thanks.
I'm at 206 Superior Street. I would like to address the idea of short-term rentals limited to one stay per week. As an owner of a short-term rental, we have guests that like to stay for a few days and not a full week. If the limit were to one, one stay per week, there will be days when the property would be unoccupied. This would be, result in a lost revenue, not just for me, but for the town in general. This is like telling a coffee shop owner that after they serve the first cup of coffee, say, "On a Monday," they will need to close for the rest of the week. Restricting the number of days of operation is overreach, as in government overreach. What problem does this solve? This and other proposed changes only seem to target the owner's ability to do the business. When my wife and I bought our home in South Haven, our desire was to spend time here and enjoy what the area, what the area has to offer. Excuse me. Renting to guests has helped to offset the expenses of homeownership. We have great neighbors, some have rentals, some don't. All have been friendly and helpful. Tourists are also friendly and we have not had any major issues. Most of the issues presented by some of the homeowners can be resolved by enforcement of current rules and regulations. By placing undue restrictions on owners and guests, it appears the intent is to eliminate short-term rentals. With no new approved rentals, over time, South Haven, South Haven will have no short-term rentals. This results in lost revenues to the city. Estimates are in the millions per year. What would fill the gap? Services and business will be reduced, or property taxes will go up, or both. The homes that serve the short-term rentals would stay empty. Please consider the perspectives of the owners and the impact to local businesses. I am hopeful for a better outcome, where the community will continue to thrive as a friendly and inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Wall. I live at 600 Virginia. I was here a couple of months ago. I should have brought my notes because I was going to say, the message I had last time was, everybody needs to be nice to each other. We get some of these people that are just not very nice and I was going to write what they put on me on Facebook because it wasn't so nice. I know what they did to you. I know what they do to poor Kate. This is, he's a stop. But it's because of an issue. I lived, I was born here. My great-grandfather was born here in 1994. We've been welcoming him as a family, everybody here. We are a big family, the Coveys, that's how originally. And this, the, how, the bad part about this is the first time I got anything about short-term rentals, I talked to Scott Smith about six years ago. I'm like, "Scott, what are you guys doing right now?" He goes, "Ron, don't worry about it." He goes, "There's a couple of loud mouths around this town that just won't stop, they won't stop, they won't stop." So, we just made this and we put the, the percentages so high that it's not going to affect anybody. Well, guess what? They keep poking, they keep poking, they keep poking, they keep poking. And the one guy was right. How are you going to enforce this? It's your house, your house, your house. Last time I was here, when they made some bad remarks about me, I asked, "What's the difference if I rent my house 12 times, 30 days at a time, or 10 times at four times? How's it affect you? How's it affect him? How's it affect you?" It shouldn't affect anybody except for who I rent my house to. I don't rent my house. I do have a short-term rental, but I have never, I will, I have not used it in six years. I love my house. I'm not changing. I have two little girls, my mom, my wife's the girl scout troop leader and the whole shot. There's one way to fix this. There should be no short-term rentals. It needs to be eliminated. There should be none. Nobody needs them. We need to go back to welcoming committee. Everybody's welcome here, just like it was. If you read what you, Google this tonight, history of South Haven, I did it, you know what first thing pops up? The, the buggies going to the steam ships in the 1800s to welcome everybody here. There was 200 short-term rentals in the 1800s. Now, all of a sudden, they, they wanted 250 last time I was here. I don't know what it is now. It might be 10, it might be 1,000. But nobody can tell me what the right number is because there's not a right number. If somebody wants to rent their house and everybody's quiet in their house, I got two little girls, I have a right next door marina. I don't want it loud. But you, we live here. It's going to be a little louder than it is going to be in Grand Junction. I understand that. Prohibition was made. And guess what? They couldn't enforce it. It didn't work and all it did was cause a lot of troubles. This is what's tearing this community apart. Not apart, because I'm really happy. Because the reason I'm here is most of my friends at the Moose and the Legion and the VFW, they don't want to come here to take the heat from these couple of people. I don't care. But we need to eliminate it. There's 1,773 communities in the Michigan. As far as I can tell, there's only 18 as restrictive as we are. Why? How did we get this? Why did we start it? It should have never have been started to begin with. Our baseline middle school, this is a great town. Out of the 445 people in our baseline middle school, 75, 75, past math. Not past math, but up to standards. We're worrying, somebody took a picture of my garbage can because I was at Michigan Adventures with my daughter. I had a birthday party with my daughter and her eight friends. I come home, two weeks later, there's a picture of my garbage can. Who's taking pictures of my garbage can? Why? How do we get to this point? I tried to keep my garbage can, luckily, a couple of weeks ago, I didn't take it out-
Give one minute.
And they, they were nice enough to go get my garbage can and bring it back. But anyway, let's just eliminate it. We don't need it. We got lost. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, the, the new whatever, undersheriff, whatever, I wish people would have stuck around and listened because it didn't sound like too many short-term rental problems in there. They're all nice. If you meet these people, they're from Sweden's, I mean, they're from everywhere around the country. They're, I mean, my house would rent for a load and somebody's not going to have a big party in my house for a load. I guarantee, well, I can't guarantee it, I don't think so. They're probably quieter than me. But we, let's just end it. Why does it matter if it's a six-day or two-night or whatever? If I wanted to do it, it's my house. What happened to my house? My choice. I mean, come on. And technically, to enforce it, you'd have to get a search warrant. We're not going to get search warrants every night for our short-term rentals. You know, I just think-
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thanks, Ron.
I'm editing.
Police Crew PRS, 561 Indiana Avenue. I had prepared comments, but I feel I have to just say some different things. The thing that is most attractive, what brings everybody here, is not, somebody said something earlier, I don't even remember what it was, it's our beautiful lake, it's our beautiful marina. And I am a resident here and anybody who is a resident here, unless you grew up here or lived here your whole life, like some of you have, we were attracted to this community because of the lake or because of the way we love the community. I can say the same things. I have had a lot of work done on my home and I've used all local businesses. I, I can say the same things as the tourist people. Tourism has always been here. The late 1800s through, maybe when the ale wives, you know, invaded our shores, I know that really dropped tourism, but tourism has always been here. The thing we do, have to do is learn to live with each other and I have said it every time that I've come up here, I've said, the ratio is supposed to be one of five homes is a short-term rental in a neighborhood. Where I live in the southwest downtown area of the STR snapshot report, which is Ward 1, there is one STR out of three homes. It is a 35%. It's, it's, it's very different. And if it wasn't, if it wasn't that, I know in our area, I think many of us would feel differently. If it was one short-term rental out of five homes, I think, I think we could live with that. But we are overwhelmed. And when you talk about South Haven becoming a ghost town, it is. It's a ghost town where I live. It's booming during the summer, but it is a ghost town where I live. And there are empty houses and it's, it's not pleasant. And the other thing I want to say is tourism, just come downtown, any, every, every weekend, I don't know with the weather changing, but it is jam-packed downtown. That is tourism. Short-term rentals is not tourism. Tourism is people visiting this town. And what is happening here is happening everywhere in the world. It's not just all around the country, it's everywhere in the world. And other cities have been able to interact, to enact restrictions to make it manageable for residents who live here or live wherever they live. In Venice, the population there used to be 175,000 people and it's 50,000 now. Because when those properties, they, they have to restrict tourism and, you know, visiting there. They have to limit it because tourists, 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 tourists are everywhere. They're everywhere. So, I don't know, you've got your work cut out for you. But I do have a couple of comments here. I'm still concerned about signs with the zoning ordinance on item 11. I hope there is clear differentiation between permanent and temporary signs. STRs are now going to be viewed as commercial and there should be the restrictions that, you know, four times a year, they can be out there for 30 days, removed and have 30 days in-between when they are out. As I understand, there is a new partnership in town made up of residents and short-term rental owners who play by the rules. They are all seeking reform and peace. This alliance is the middle ground. It is the path to true- is the middle ground. It is the path to true, true reform. There are still so many unanswered questions and unresolved issues on both the zoning ordinance and the STR code of ordinance. These issues need to be resolved before a public hearing can take place. The middle-ground STR ordinance is there and ready if the city manager would just stop blocking it. Thank you very much.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Just real quick, this crowd can be very intimidating for a lot of people on tonight. But I just want to echo what Lisa said, that I've been here, I lived here all my life, 58 years. South Haven has always had tourism, always had. The issue that we're facing tonight is, this group is trying to tie tourism with STRs. STRs are not tourism. We've always had tourism. We've always had places where you can rent, but those were not all over the city. I said this before, I've said it many times, that I think if we had a crystal ball, we'd have overlay, would allow STRs to be in certain areas. But the fact is, it is just too many of them now in our backyard. You talk about the hardship. Go to South Side Ward, Ward 1. It has been overtaken with STRs, causing mass gingerification. And so, I want to kind of stick to this, because I don't want to sound offensive. But these, I appreciate all the concern, people that showed up on tonight. I would love to see that same effort. You talk about inclusion. You talk about caring for one another. None of these faces do I see when it comes to talking about affordable housing. None. So, it makes me think, there's only, you're only thinking about yourself. So let me just stick to what my original comments were. Because I, I see the look on the council face, and I want to say to council tonight, I agree with the proposed ordinance. But I want to say, because you guys are looking quite funny tonight. You've been inundated with a plethora of stories that would touch the hearts of any audience, especially if you bought into the fact that the owners of these STRs are victims. There's another side to this story with locals, myself, 58 years, and it seemed like we're just being overran. No one cares about their concerns. The retired teacher that retired in a community where they knew the neighbors. Hospitals that can't hire doctors and keep them here. Then the story goes on and on. I just want to remind you all, because you have this little down-beaten look on your face, there's another side to this story. But if you buy, if you buy into the fact that these owners are victims, I can understand that. You've heard numbers and statistics that would cause concern and suggest a major hardship to owners of these STRs. That's if you buy into the fact that they're the victims. But the facts, let's just deal with some facts. And I didn't want to talk tonight, but there's another part. There's other people. There's another side to this story. If you, there's support, there are reports, there were some reports that we heard in this council that suggest that most of the money generated by STRs don't even stay within this city. Most of the money doesn't even stay in, within this city. The city knows it, the council knows it. You've seen the reports. Many of the STR owners don't even live within the city of South Haven. I believe it's at least a little over 20% of the owners are only, the, only 20, a little over 20% are owned by local residents. It's been said tonight, that South Haven has always been a short-term rental place. It's always been short-term rentals in South Haven, but not out, not over all the city. And not at the numbers that we have now.
Give one minute.
South Haven is a great outlier. It's been said tonight, business will go out of businesses, business, with more, with less STRs and more restrictions. But the fact is, STRs are closing up with the number of, I mean, businesses are closing up with the number of STRs that we have now. I don't have a place going out of business. Businesses are closing up with what? The number of STRs we have now. And I close on this. We have more STRs than all Lake Shore municipalities combined, I believe. But yet, we have less revenues, less revenues. And we say that we need more, and we shouldn't have restriction or try to have some type of balance, when other cities, other Lake Shore municipalities, cities are doing just fine and even better than South Haven, with way less STRs. So, I want you all to cheer up. You all are doing the right thing. Smile.
Your time is up.
Don't be overtaken by this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Mandy Cervetus, 525 Superior Street. Everyone knows me as a minion, I guess, in South Haven. I own Big Blue Properties, Big Blue Rentals, and we bring a lot of people here. The income that we, like, make, we give back to the community. As all you guys know, we give the Emily. We do a lot. As Ryan is my husband, as everyone knows, he is a Realtor. Yes, he is. But the memories that people make here, and the jobs, I got, I was in dental for 30 years. I got to quit my job, and now I'm my own, I'm my own owner of the company. So that's awesome for me. Everyone, like the store owners, our friends, the restaurants, the cleaners, the groundspeople, everything that we give back, and all these people that make money off of short-term rentals, we have a zero tolerance. Zero tolerance. That means that if you call, if you call, anyone calls on any of our property, we're there within 45 minutes to put a stop to it. We have a zero tolerance. In our contract, it says that you are asked to leave immediately with no refund. So if any of our properties have a problem, please call us. Call the 24/7 hotline. We will put a stop to it. But people are making memories here. My husband was born and raised here, fourth-year generation. That's something about, he graduated college, came back, and given back to the community. I think that's huge. And thank you so much for everything that you guys do, and listening to everything, because it's going to be a hard decision to make. But just think of all the storefronts, the restaurants, the cleaning, everything else that we supply, not just short-term rental. Because all these people think that LLC is a big corporation. It's not a corporation. If you look to how many people own LLCs, they're not corporations. They just do it so they don't get sued if something happens. But the short-term rentals, if you have a problem, that's why you guys put in the fact, the 24/7 hotline. We have 45 minutes to respond. If you have a problem, call. We're, we're on call 24/7. That means that we have no life in the summertime, first of all. In the wintertime, bringing it down to a week long, people are going to lose. I mean, our economy is going to lose. The storefronts, the restaurants. People come here for long weekends. So, I hope that you guys take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy. Any other comments? We have seats in the front row, if you want to move and have a seat. If there are no other comments, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items A through E?
I move to approve consent items, consent items, A through E.
Support.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Almost forgot. All right, Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, number nine. The city council will be asked to receive a presentation from the Local Officers' Compensation Commission and consider an 8.8% increase for the mayor and council members' compensation. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. So by city charter, we have a Local Officers' Compensation Committee that must meet every two years and review the compensation of the elected officials, such as the city council and the mayor. I believe Bob Sherman is here to give the presentation on the work that has been done by the Local Officers' Compensation Commission, and ultimately their recommendation to this council. So Bob, if you'd like to come on up? When you're ready for the slides, just let me know.
You can start them right now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for the chance to be here today. I think everyone is fully aware of this, but I'll give you just a tiny bit of background. The Local Officers' Compensation Committee is actually, this predates our time, I think, goes back to 1909. Act Number 279 passed in 1909 by the Michigan Legislature, the Home Rule City Act. And that enabled the Local Officers' Compensation Committee. The group this year includes Melissa Acosta, Jesusa Alamein, Bill Atkins, Mary Kilpatrick Hall, and myself, and at least several of us are here tonight. The Local Officers' Compensation Committee is actually authorized to determine your salary. You, of course, have the ability to reject that, but only according to the ordinance, at least as I understand it, I'll defer to all the lawyers in the room, only if by action you choose to refuse it. But the group has that authority, if you will. And that determination will be effective 30 days after its filing. So, next slide, if you would. Just a little bit of recent history. This group met, the Local Officers' Compensation Committee, met in 2021. Did not meet in 2020 because of, we all remember COVID. Prior to that, had not met since 2008. Not sure exactly why there was that lapse, but there was. In 2021, the group met and recommended an increase for the mayor and city council, but the council took no action. It met again in 2022, and some of you were part of that, I know. And at that point, the mayor's salary was increased from $1,200 per year to $1,500, and the city council members increased from $800 to $1,000. That was the first increase since 2008. And by our estimate, inflation was certainly well in excess of 20%, perhaps as much as 27% or maybe even more. That motion or that recommendation in 2022 did reach unanimous approval by the council, and that did go into effect. In 2024, we've reviewed, the committee has reviewed quite a few metrics and data points. And special thanks to Kim Wise. I'm not sure if Kim is here now, she was earlier. But Kim Wise, our Director of Human Resources, provided a great deal of information from the Michigan Municipal League in the form of their salary survey. And we tried to look at those data points based on cities of comparable size. We looked at cities in Van Buren and adjacent counties to try to see where did South Haven lie reasonably within that, that range of compensations. We also looked at data from like the Bureau of Labor Statistics, social security payment increases. If you're as lucky as me, you're getting social security, but maybe not. I know some of you are way too young. But the increase in social security payment was 8.7% in 2022. In 2023, it was 3.2%, and in '24, it was 2.5%. The aggregate, the cumulative effect of that is just under 15%. So that's significant. The employment cost index, we've heard throughout the election cycle, how much about inflation and the way costs have increased. So, all of that leads the commission, on the next slide, I think, Kate, to conclude that, even though South Haven is a relatively small city, as we know, four or so thousand people, but when you look at the role that the city plays in collaborating with South Haven Township and surrounding areas with emergency services, water and sewer, parks and recreation, it's a much bigger role, if you will, than just looking at 4,000 citizens in the city. So our recommendation to you is that the salaries for both the mayor and city council members be increased by 8.8%. And that would take the mayor's salary from its current level of $1,500 to $1,632. It would take council member salaries from $1,000 to $1,088. For a lot of folks in the audience, probably, you're not aware, these folks in front of you are paid, I believe, twice a year. Some of you may not even have known you got paid, but you do. And of course, there's a compensation per meeting. Right now, that compensation is $30 a meeting, I believe, and that would go up as well to $32.64. So you can see, the overall budget then would increase from the current level of $12,540 to $13,641, assuming the recommendation was enacted and, and approved. Like I said, there are one or two others. Bill Atkins is here, I know. Jesusa was here. I'll invite them to make any comments, and I'll invite you to ask any questions that you might have. Yes, or Joe?
Yeah, comment. The last time this came up, I remember saying, I've always disliked when politicians vote themselves a salary increase.
Understand.
So, I still feel a little that way, but something came up last time that I thought made a lot of sense. I think it's important to have a nice diversity of residents up on city council, and that also means diversity of age. I don't think we have all the diversity we could sitting up here. And I think a little extra money would make it easier for a younger man or a woman to serve on city council. They may have to pay for babysitters, they have other expenses. So, I think a little extra money, and I, if I did the math, it's $151 difference for the whole year. So, it's a minimal amount of money. But Kate reminded me today, when I said, well, I don't really support it, but I want to attract younger people. And she said, look at all the extra meetings we went to this year, and all the extra time. It is a time-consuming job. And I do it, and I think all of us do it, because we want to do it for the community. But I think it's fair to raise the salary a little, especially, and most importantly, to attract more diversity up here.
Totally agree, Joe. And that was a topic that the committee discussed significantly. If we would be lucky enough to have council members or mayors with school-aged children who may need to enlist childcare while they attend meetings. And as you know, it's more than just two meetings a month. It's workshops, and it's probably 30 or more meetings per year, occasional travel, what have you. And not, not to mention the other meetings. So I know some of you are participating with Shays, or the Water Sewer Authority, and so on. So you're attending more than just 30 meetings here. All of them potentially could incur childcare and/or other expenses for a young mom or dad who was serving. So I think that's a very good point, and something the committee actively talked about.
Any other questions? Wendy?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to comment and say thank you all for putting this together so thoughtfully. And I agree with Joe's sentiment and what you said as well about it possibly attracting a more diverse slate of council people up here, which is always a great thing. So thank you.
Thanks.
And I would just second what Joe was saying, that the, I voted twice to not take a raise, having been on council for a long time. And the last time we voted not to take a raise, Rosalie Picati was the chair, and she lectured us that we're, you're not doing it for us, we're doing it for the next people to take these seats.
So true.
To encourage people to take these seats. So, yeah. Thank you for your time.
All righty.
Mary?
You're welcome.
Bob, thank you to you and the group that did this. I was just curious, in everything that you reviewed, is there any stipend for where a council person can submit for childcare to attend meetings?
We didn't see that. Kim, as I said, was a great resource with Michigan Municipal League data. Perhaps that's out there, but if so, Kim didn't find it and share it with us. But that's a good question. Don't have an answer.
It might be something to look at next time, to have more incentive to get younger
Right, right.
families.
All right then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion? Or, what's your pleasure, council?
Do we need a motion? I thought if we took no action, it goes into effect.
I would say, just to be safe, let's do a motion to adopt the, the proposed increase from the LOCC. That way, everyone knows that's what we did. Otherwise, if council does not want to, I might like motion for that. Also, if council does not want to have the recommendation go into effect, we will bring a resolution back to council for consideration at the next meeting.
I would move to approve the Local Officers' Compensation Commission and accept the 8.8% increase for the mayor and council members' compensation.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? I'm voting no. Thank you. Moving on. Number 10, the city council will be asked to consider approval of a new commercial use license agreement with Easy Beach Chairs and Cabanas of South Haven. Kate?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. We have, the city has been approached by a vendor for beach chairs and cabanas to operate on the city's beaches. And similar to how we've brought other commercial use agreements, this is coming to city council. I'm not sure if I see the... Oh, there they are. Very good, very good. So these are the proposed vendors. They are looking to place beach chairs and cabanas at certain locations that have been noticed in the packet. This will be for an eight-hour block of time. They are requesting the south end of the South Beach where we have our other commercial vending. And then we also, they've also requested us space on South Beach. To be clear, Member Hesley did bring up that the agreement doesn't, still refers to picnic language. We would change that just to say beach chairs and cabana rentals, so that is cleaned up. But I'm happy to have them come up and explain what they're looking to do, if council has any questions for them.
Would you like to go to the podium and microphone?
Well, thank you to Kate, and thank you, council, for entertaining our request for vendor. My name is Tim McElhany, 615 LaGrange. This is my wife, Deborah. I get to her eventually. I'll get in trouble for that. But we have been residents there or own the property since 2005. My wife lives here full-time. She's a nurse for Corwell Health, and I am a fire chief over in the middle of the state. And what brings us here, or the reason for this is, is we're about four years away from retirement. We bought the house in 2005, like I said, with the intent of this will be our retirement home where we will sell our other properties and live here full-time. And so we're looking for something, and started looking for something a few years ago that we could do here to keep ourselves entertained, especially in the summer months. We've looked into possible restaurant options. And we came across accidentally, and I'll have my wife pass out the presentation that we're doing for Easy Beach. We got into bicycling a few years ago in the Calhaven Trail. And we see a lot of people coming into town on bicycles and on motorcycles, and coming down to the beach in their bicycle gear, in their motorcycle gear. And we thought, what a neat idea to possibly start a business of supplying cabanas and umbrellas and some chairs for those people that are coming to town. If you're not at the beach, as you all know, if you're not at the beach by 1 o'clock, you're probably going to be parking a long ways away from the beach, both north and south. And you're going to be, you know, to carry everything down on a motorcycle or a bicycle, it'd be very, very difficult. So that was our idea. To be completely honest, we actually started doing it. We didn't know we had to have a license. So, we found out, and we were approached by Kate, and that's why we're making the presentation. We stopped doing that this year, but we did, while we were doing this, it was for people that were already planning on being here. Where we're proposing, if you look at our maps of the commercial section of North Beach, and South Beach, we want to, we know that that's the, I call it the family beach. That's where I brought my kids. And so, we're proposing setting up south of the hard sidewalk that goes out to the beach. So we would be between there, or we're asking for permission to be from there, south to the Blue Stairs at the, at Kids Corners. And just some statistics that I did real quick on Google Earth. The South Beach, the proposal for the North Beach, there's 13,702 square meters there. One of our sets, our cabanas are six foot by six foot with two chairs. We, I put in there for the little spillover that those, each one would be approximately six square meters. So if we were to be able to place five at the North Beach and five at the South Beach, we're talking about 30 square meters of 13,702 at the North Beach. And on the South Beach, what's in the packet that we're proposing, there is 33,702 square meters south of that hard walkway there by the playground equipment. And so, that's what we're asking for, but we're open to whatever the council. And we want to get this started. We're hoping that we can grow it over the next few years so that we can have a steady three to five, whatever council's preference is. It's just a way for us to make a little extra income, as we've heard before, for retirement purposes here in South Haven. We will make sure, these are kind of expensive, so they're going to be well taken care of. We're going to make sure that we police that. We'll go set it up for them in the morning. And then, at 6 o'clock at night, we'll take it down, and we'll remove anything that they leave behind. So we'll leave the beach in as good or better than we found it in the morning. Ideally, as Kate was saying, we'd like to get out there as soon as we can. But again, I'm open to whatever suggestions or whatever council in the city of South Haven would like to have. So, that's kind of our proposal. We want to make sure that we, there's no presence on the beach. They won't be, we're not going to be down there during the day. Everything's done online. Everything's done by credit card. So we would go down, and the way we do it now, or the way we did it, is we would go down, set it up. They would say how close they wanted to be to the water. We would set it up, take a picture, text it to them, so that their set was ready. And then we ask them to let us know when they're leaving, and we're going to take it down. But the leave time is, the latest is 6:00 PM, is what we were doing this year. So, that's our impact. We wanted to be down there and out of there. Also, just to let you know, we have a little Bronco Sport. That's what we've used. We're not going to have a big panel van going down there. We also have a couple of electric bikes, and I built a little cart that goes behind there. And that's, again, our plan is to have minimal impact on parking, or our beach time is just set up and then come right back that evening and tear down with no presence on the beach during the day.
Does anyone have questions? Wendy?
I'm not sure if it's a question, again, so much as a comment. I love this idea, and I think it's super fun. I guess my concern is whether it's a fit for our public beaches, or if there might be a private beach that would be more suitable to something like this. I know it's not a huge amount of space, which I appreciate, but if it's going to be every day during the summer season, I just have a hard time kind of carving out our public beach for business use on a daily basis versus like, you know, a special event situation in a larger capacity like that versus the tiny one picnic table. So, that's just kind of what I am struggling with. It's not that the concept is bad, and it looks beautiful. I just have some reservations about our public beaches.
And that, you know, again, anything that we do, we want to enhance the experience of the Lake Michigan. The way I look at it is, the people that we're going to be renting to aren't coming because of our cabanas. They're already going to be, they're already going to be your beach residents. So I think our impact will be relatively small. We do, and we had actually more rentals this last year on private beaches. So we do offer that, too. It's not just on the public beach. When people rent a, we had one owner that, or, excuse me, one renter that rented a beach property and had our cabanas, had several of our cabanas all week long on their private beach. So, I don't know how big this is going to be, other than we have a total of 10, and we have no intentions of going any more than that. And while we were operating this summer, we never got above three at any one time. So I, it's a good idea. I hope it's going to get to five. I don't know that it will, but that's what we're asking for.
Joe?
Yeah, one of the concerns I would have is no one being there. Every other beach chair and umbrella company I've ever seen on beaches, they always have someone or someones there, because when you put the umbrella in, they usually use a drill, make the hole, put it all the way in so it can't blow out. And even then, on a windy day, which we get a lot, they can blow over. If that thing blows over, you need to have an employee there to catch it, stop it before it hits another person. So to leave them completely unmanned, I think, is not in the best interest of safety. So, that would be a concern. And then my question is, is this for parties, or is this strictly for individuals or family to rent it?
Yeah, these, when we say a cabana, they're six-foot square cabana that have sides that come down. And we've had rentals this summer again, that on a day above 25 mile an hour winds, we've had to cancel. They still come out, use the chairs. We didn't set up the umbrellas. The cabanas are a lot more stable. They're not only have a stake, but they have sand pockets that can take a lot more wind. But that's a concern of ours, too. So, for sure, the umbrellas wouldn't be out. My concern, or my, our reason and rationale for that is to have as little impact on the beach as possible as far as not having a station or setting up something where we're there.
So you have this operating last summer?
We did. We started in June, I think, and we were notified that we were not in compliance. We looked on the website. We didn't, you know, we didn't, so we met with Kate. She let us know that we weren't supposed to be doing that, and that we needed to make a petition to you guys to go ahead and get a license and do this the correct way.
And when you were doing it in June, did you have any problems?
None.
Great.
Thank you for being here. And I was going to say, when I first read the packet, my reservations were about the cabanas. Not knowing what they were, you didn't provide a picture, so thank you for putting this packet together. For people that don't have the privilege of seeing it, it just looks like an easy-up style, but these are much nicer dressed up, easy-ups. The umbrellas are a classic-looking umbrella parasol style. So it's very nice-looking. The chairs, a classic wood beach chair. So that does put me at ease a little bit, because I was, you know, a cabana, is it an easy-up, or is it a circus tent? Somewhere in the middle, and it'd be, you know, in people's views, and that would start a hole. So, this makes me feel better. So my only reservation is just that we don't normally do commercial use on the South Beach. But I would, you know, of course, go with my colleagues.
And again, we knew that this was going to be outside of council's comfort zone, and that's why we want to stay, you know, as far south. But based on the limited that we had this year, South Beach is the beach people like. That's, by far, we had more interest. We did set on the North Beach, and we did, and a lot of our sets wanted kids' corners down at the bottom of the stairs. And I got to tell you, hauling that up and down the stairs is a lot, a lot more difficult than I thought it was going to be. But, so, we want to, we want to work with you. We want to have as little impact on that South Beach as we can, because we love the South Beach, too, and so did our kids, and our grandkids still do.
Mary?
Yeah, thank you for this packet. It's very helpful. My reservation is that all the other licenses are for just four hours, and they're not every day. And this could have, you know, if it's for eight hours, how long is it usually there before the people are there, and how long before they leave?
So this summer, I did it most of the time, because I'm here full-time. And I would start setting up after the beach comber left. So, we would have it set up around 10:00. They were coming, usually by 11:00, the families were there. And sometimes they, most of the time, they left in the late afternoon. They'd text me and let me know that they were leaving. Only a couple times, I had anybody there for the whole eight hours. So most of the time, by late afternoon, people were ready to go.
So it potentially could actually be more than eight hours?
No.
With setup and breakdown?
No, that's, our contract is eight hours. Because right now, it's from 10:00 to 6:00, you know, but most people weren't there at 10:00 in the morning. So we, last year was just like that soft opening where we were trying to figure out what we wanted to do and how it worked well, and would probably bump that up because people just aren't coming at 10:00 in the morning.
And we want to be out of there before the sunset crew comes in. You know, the people that are coming for sunset, that's a really popular time. And quite honestly, for a retirement gig, you know, I want to be able to be off the beach, too, by 6:30, myself.
And what about the holidays, weekends, and July 4th?
We didn't see any difference in the rentals over that time.
Yeah, we won't go past the 6:00.
Yeah.
You know, as far as that. And that seems to be, you know, when people come to the beach, they're there for more than four hours normally. When they come, especially if they're, well, we're setting up for them, but if they're setting up, they're usually there for the day. And when we set up for ourselves, when we have family here, we go down early in the morning to get that prime spot, you know, close to the water for our grandsons. And we're usually there all day long. That's our experience. But for our rentals, 10:00 to 6:00 is what we're, that's our limit, and hopefully, shorter. But again, we're willing to work with council. We know this is outside your comfort zone.
Would you like to put this on the next agenda, or would you like to vote now?
I think it's a good idea. It's only, I mean, the agreement is just for a year. I think if there's any problems, we'll get them addressed, and next year, we can do it some different. But I think it's a good idea. I'm ready to vote, approve it now.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the commercial park use license agreement with Easy Beach Chairs and Cabanas with the editorial changes that have been discussed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to amend to include that it's not, it would not be more than up to five chairs per beach area.
Okay, she, and what was your number of chairs?
We do a maximum of six.
But we've never had that amount.
Right.
The rental is the cabana or the umbrella, because we have both. Two chairs and a beach blanket.
That's a majority of the time. That's what it is. But if there is, there has been some families that have requested some extra chairs. We're certainly willing to drop it to five.
So there's a motion for...
It would be five, five settings.
Oh.
Oh, oh, we're, we misunderstood.
I meant five persons. I meant, because I...
Five umbrellas, five, or five?
Five, yeah.
Yes.
Five parties, however. Not more than five parties per...
So the agreement right now is six, right? You're just reducing it by one?
No, I think it's six people.
It's, it's, we're asking for five on North Beach and five on South Beach.
What is...
And there's six, up to six people per set.
I don't think it has that.
It does say six individuals, so...
Right, but where is the limit of five?
We did not put a limit of five.
That's what I was saying, is there's not a limit of five settings per beach.
Right, it would, the way the agreement is worded now would be a maximum of one set on each beach.
Oh, it's limited to one?
That's correct.
Party of six per beach.
That's correct. If council would like to change that, that's in the agreement, that's how it's been written.
We can only have one umbrella per beach? That's, no.
It says no more than six individuals, however you wanna cut it versus beach chairs or cabanas, but that's how we wrote it in, in this agreement. So if council's looking to change that to five sets per beach, that's the motion. I'm not sure if there's been a second.
So I, I will withdraw that motion. I thought it was unlimited and that each setting would be six.
Okay, you're withdrawing that?
I'm withdrawing.
Okay, any more discussion? Joe?
Yeah, I strongly believe this should not be passed unless there's somebody working the beach, watching them. I have never, in all the years going to beaches all over this country, gone to a beach where they rent chairs and umbrellas, where there isn't an employee sitting there watching them all day. And I think we're opening ourselves up to a can of worms and possible injury, having umbrellas and chairs up there and having people leave and text you or email you, and you get there when you can. Somebody should be sitting at each of those two beaches and watching them.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Hosley?
No.
Onuki?
No.
Reeser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
That is four yeses. Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's take a break. Is there a motion to take a recess?
I move, do we take a five minute recess?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Aho.
I don't mean to interrupt.
We are back in session. We are at number eleven. The city council will be asked to consider an introduction to a new zoning ordinance for the city of South Haven and to schedule a public hearing for December second, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. in council chambers. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so we have been working on a zoning ordinance for about two years now and you are finally seeing the fruit of that labor. Um, so what we have tonight is a, is a draft zoning ordinance. And also here tonight is Andy Moore of Williams of Works that we consulted with throughout this process. And I really appreciate, appreciate the work that Andy and Brad have put into this. Also here is Kelly Desette, who is our, um, our zoning administrator. We'd like to work, I'm sorry, we'd like to go through a presentation on what some of the changes are, um, in this draft document. And if council's amenable to, um, the draft document, we'd like to set this for a public hearing, um, at the next meeting. So with that being said, let's go ahead and start this presentation. And if you can, please use your microphone so the folks at home can hear.
All right. Thank you very much, Kate. So, um, as Kate mentioned, well, first of all, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Andy. I'm with Williams of Works. Um, as Kate mentioned, we started this process about two years ago to start, um, you know, basically draft a, a new zoning ordinance for the city of South Haven. So this is a, a very significant overhaul of your current zoning ordinance. This is something that, you know, really started in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. And really, we were, we had prepared a report at the request of the city to kind of walk through the existing ordinance, look for some problem areas, look for some things that might have been confusing, areas that weren't working well, things like that, um, which we did. So, so sort of the, the four main takeaways there, where we found some, you know, potentially conflicting provisions. We found in the existing ordinance, some, the structure was, was confusing. We found it generally speaking, difficult to navigate. And we kind of felt that it was difficult for us to navigate. It was probably even more difficult for the, you know, average member of the public to navigate and, and, and work with, with the document. There were a number of regulations in there that were simply outdated and either, um, weren't really in practice anymore or had been, you know, needed to be modified due to, uh, changes in the statute or changes in interpretation or case law or things like that. And then we also kind of noticed that as the ordinance was amended, it seemed like there were some challenges associated with taking that amendment and incorporating it into the framework of your existing document. So sometimes it, there was not that much clarity in terms of which section was amended and how it was all kind of working together. So our goal through, uh, this whole thing was to kind of address all, all of those issues. So we started this in August of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we had a, uh, steering committee that consisted of two planning commissioners, a Z B A member, a city councilperson and a resident. And we met every month for a lot of months, maybe sixteen to eighteen months. We also solicited input from staff and the city attorney at the time. That document was completed in late, about a year ago, not quite a year ago, in December of two thousand twenty-three and sent to the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission spent a lot of time with it, so we first met with the planning commission, I think in January or maybe February was our first meeting. I don't remember the specific date. And then we worked on that over the spring and summer and eventually, um, in October of this year, the planning commission recommended adoption of the zoning ordinance to the, uh, city council. So the rewrite focused on three primary areas and we'll talk a little bit about each one of those. One is the overall sort of structure and how the document is organized. The second one is, is process and procedures, and the third ones are the actual regulations and, and standards themselves. So with respect to the structure, we rearranged a lot of things. So not all of the article and chapter numbers are, are, are the same in the draft compared to what you have currently. Um, we added a table of contents. We modified all of the, you know, headings and formatting and the overall structure of, of the document. It was all made to look consistent. The heading colors and font faces and all that was made to be consistent. Then we also modified the, something as simple as a page numbering format on the bottom of the document. So on your current zoning ordinance, it just says page seventy-four. And so there are potentially multiple versions of that document floating around. When page seventy-four is different from a different page seventy-four, and when you amend it and you are adding in pages or something like that, you're, you're renumbering potentially hundreds of pages beyond that. So just little stuff like that, we look to try to clean up to make it, um, simpler to use, more intuitive to use, um, easier to amend, things like that. The second part of that looks at the process and the procedure. So, um, as some of you know, the planning commission goes through some kind of a process depending on the type of application. Site plan reviews have one process. Special land use applications have a slightly different process. A P U D has a slightly different process from both of those. Things that go to the zoning board of appeals, like variances or interpretations have their own process that they need to follow. They're all slightly different. And so it's, it's important for all of those to follow the correct procedures. And by correct, I mean either best practice or, um, what's required by, by, by statute, because the zoning act requires different procedures for different types of applications. Um, and then for each of those, we have approval criteria were added to each, so we can have a clearer and more predictable process. So what we mean by that is that somebody comes in, they want to, uh, they ask to amend the zoning ordinance or they ask to rezone their, their, their property. The, the new ordinance would have a set of criteria in there that the planning commission can walk through, uh, at a meeting. And so the idea is that if you meet these criteria, then you would potentially, you would likely get to a yes. And so as, so everyone is, is understanding sort of what the considerations are and what the, what, what, what the standards are and what the planning commission is going to be thinking about. There's a, there, there's a more predictable process there for everyone and it's less just kind of up in the air and oh, gosh, we hope that the planning commission makes, you know, the decision that, 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 that we want. We don't like to see, um, sort of arbitrary seeming decisions. We like to see very intentional and very methodically made decisions and this ordinance is designed to sort of encourage that. Then the last part of this is regulations and standards. And so by that, I mean some of the minutia of zoning, so setbacks and how we're calculating lot coverage and what kind of specific standards we have for certain types of special uses. We did keep a lot of what is in the zoning ordinance now, so we didn't change, uh, too much in terms of your zoning districts and setbacks and things like that largely were left alone, although we, there were a handful of, of modifications that, that were made. But with a lot of these standards, our goal was, is clarity. We want it to be very clear. Someone comes in and they want to build an accessory building or they want to build a house or they want to do something on their property. We want it to be very clear what the standards are, how they're, how things are measured. And so again, you get to a fairly predictable process and everyone is applying the same standards in the same way, so it's easy for everyone to follow. A few notable changes that I will talk about. So I mentioned the organization and graphics. Um, those are all new. Your existing zoning ordinance has an I one and I one B and an I two district, so those are all industrial zones. We consolidated those into two, an I one and an I two. Your existing zoning ordinance has a, a professional business district that was supposed to be replaced by the H S D, which is the hospital district or health services district, that was never, uh, fully done in your, in your existing ordinance. There's still remnants of this P B one district in the current ordinance, so we got rid of all that and sort of fully integrated the health services district. We eliminated most of the high risk erosion overlay standards, not because they're not necessary, but, but because they are duplicating what Eagle was already doing. So under the, um, under the draft, it doesn't mean those standards don't have to be followed. It just means that if someone wants to develop in the high risk erosion overlay, they obtain an Eagle permit, which then demonstrates compliance with those theme standards that you have presently before coming into the office to get a zoning compliance permit. We eliminated the M forty-three and M, and I one ninety-six of business loop overlay districts. Uh, we did that because it was adding a lot of additional regulation and, uh, staff struggled with it and we didn't see a lot of benefit of having it in there. We felt like the underlying zoning districts, uh, were handling those properties just fine. So we didn't see a, an, a need for an additional layer of regulation, added an additional layer of confusion for everybody, especially, um, given how it was, it was put together at the time. We also reworked the, the P U D chapter. So in the existing zoning ordinance right now, a P U D is treated as a special land use. That's not really an approach that we like, so what we're proposing is to have a P U D be its own zoning district. So if someone comes in and applies for a new planned unit development, development, if approved, the property gets rezoned to a planned unit development district. And then there's a process that, that follows along with that. It still in, includes planning commission review. It still includes city council with, review and, 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 and public hearings. So there's, um, there's still plenty of, of oversight and room for, uh, for, for, for participation amongst, you know, you all and planning commission and staff and the public. So, um, the idea is, is, is the same, but the framework and the mechanism that we're gonna use to make that happen, um, we think is gonna be a better. There's a question, Mr. Reeser?
Yeah, I have a question, and maybe this is not the time to ask it, but eliminating most high risk erosion overlay standards. This whole thing about high risk, um, in erosion areas. So people build houses and we, I thought we've tried to discourage house building on bluffs. Because the last ti, the, the water goes up and down every ten years, as we know. So the last time it was up, which is about five. So the last time it was up, which was about five years ago, we had houses starting to fall in the water and all kind of problems. So where do we stand now with a house on a bluff? And then they want to put a swimming pool even closer to the bluff. What, what's the city's position? Or do you want to talk about that some other time?
Yeah, well, so I guess real quick, so there's not, from a, from a practice perspective in terms of what's actually allowed, there's not really much of a change. So the standards you have in your zoning ordinance right now, that staff has to apply, duplicate what Eagle is already doing. And so our thought was that instead of having staff trying to administer this, this high-risk erosion overlay that you have now, which is, is very confusing frankly. And then having, and then also them having to get an Eagle permit who are going to apply those same standards is we'll just have Eagle apply their standards, issue a permit, and then they can bring that to staff. So staff already knows that those standards that are currently in your ordinance have been satisfied. So we're not really making a change in that respect. It's, the same standards are going to apply. We're just not, the city is not going to apply them separately from Eagle because they would have jurisdiction anyways.
So with all that said, Eagle makes a decision whether a swimming pool or a house is too close to the bluff?
Eagle has jurisdiction over certain types of development like that within the high-risk erosion, yes.
Okay, so it takes the city out of the middle?
Correct. I mean, there's still a zoning permit that would have to be obtained, but the application of those specific standards would be out of the city's hands.
Okay, thanks.
Mary?
For clarity, it's only in the high erosion, which is the south end of the city. So it wouldn't apply to all of the lakeshore. And so that's, you know, one difference is that the special land use permit requirement for a pool between, along the lake and along the river has been removed from the ordinance. And that wasn't identified. I just realized that today as I was looking through it. And so there are differences for along the lake for some of the things that are being proposed here.
Yeah, so there, and there are, you know, to kind of get back to where, just talking about the ordinance, I mean, there are a lot of, you know, there are, again, this is not a, a reorg, this is not just simply a reorganization or a recodification of the existing ordinance. This is a significant sort of overhaul of the entire document. And so it's important for everyone to realize that. This isn't just moving this text from here and sticking it over there. It's also reworking a lot of the language in, in a way to make it more approachable, more usable, better for staff to administer consistently in all of that. So there are going to be differences. You know, there are some areas where we think, and the committee felt that the city had a lot of, a lot of restriction and a lot of sort of unnecessary steps and unnecessary process involved. And so in some of those areas, the draft sort of proposes to delegate some of that to staff where we think that it should be. But yeah, I think it's just sort of as we kind of wrap this up in terms of my presentation, that it's important to understand that this is a, this is a, I mean, we spent two years on this. We had an entire committee that went through meeting after meeting, talking about each of these issues and kind of coming to a decision and some recommendations. But I do want to sort of emphasize, I guess, that, you know, we're, the entire intent here is to make this, you know, clear, predictable, you know, defendable, obviously. And just an overall improvement for everybody to be able to use it more effectively and to understand it better. So the last couple of things I want to mention in terms of processes, that there was a planning commission, like I said, they spent seven or eight months on this. Several meetings, kind of going through a bunch of different sections. We made some adjustments here and there. Planning commission made a recommendation in October. There's a, the document can be reviewed by the city attorney if desired. And then there'd be a city council public hearing, which you can schedule tonight if you wish. And then the final step obviously would be, would be final adoption. So this is nearing the conclusion of a fairly lengthy process from, from staff and from us and from the planning commission. And so at this point, I think we're here to answer questions, take any comments, of course, and we'll go from there. So I guess I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Brown. And if there are questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have just a quick question. So I know part of the, the funding for this effort came from, I think, the MEDC. And I'm just wondering, have they weighed in on this final product? Is there any further thing we're waiting on from them in order to say, yeah, you guys did a good job? Or is it, you know, is it, what, what's their involvement, I guess?
Well, you are correct. We did have a $30,000 grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to assist with this project. And I don't know that we were, they have been involved in receiving, you know, progress updates along the way. I don't know that we were waiting for any kind of final sign off from them in the way of acceptance. But we will, of course, send the final document to them.
Okay, thanks.
Mary?
Along those same lines, is there a timeline by which it has to be completed for that funding? The MEDC funding?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that right now. I'm sorry.
Okay, and for this, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I'm not looking to make it perfect, but there are some concerns. I think that one of the biggest concerns I have is at the city, at the planning commission, on October 3rd, we made a motion to change how lot coverage was defined. And it still exists as it did then, and it shouldn't be, it should be different. There are other things. There's some typographical errors and inconsistencies between figures and language that I had identified in an email on October 2nd. Resent it on October 9th when I saw some substantive changes that had not really been identified to us. And that's my biggest concern, is not all substantive changes have been identified. I think a couple of key ones are for the parking. So under the new ordinance, parking for short-term rentals doesn't depend on the zoning district for which, in which they occur. All, they all have to have two parking spaces per unit and then one for each additional bedroom. And that's more aligned with R-1A, R-1B, but it's being applied across the unit. And for the CBD, that currently, you get one residential unit where you do not have to have a parking space. But now every residential unit has to have a parking space. And I see that counterproductive of trying to regenerate downtown. I had already mentioned the pools. And at a time that we're trying to be very protective of our, our bluffs that erode very easily and a special land use is, is required for pools along the lake and along the river, that was removed and wasn't identified as a, a change. And the other one was mentioned earlier today with regard to the removal of a bakery in a RM1 area. That was also a change that was made without it being identified. And so I think we're very close, but I'm concerned that there are still some few details that I want to make sure it's completed before it's presented to us for passage. And, you know, I've gone through, I sent the comments. I've gone through and, and made handwritings on the printout. And I'll scan those and get those to Kate, hopefully by Wednesday, that you can share.
Do you have comments on that?
So on some of those, so like, I believe that we made all the changes to the ordinance that the planning commission requested. The parking for short-term rentals issue, we set that to what the planning commission had requested. The, I will have to check on the down, on the requirement in the CBD that requires one parking space per residential unit. I thought that was a request, but if not, I mean, I'm, honestly, I'm all for removing parking requirements downtown. So if that's something that the city is agreeable to, that's fine.
So I do, I do think that the one parking space per dwelling unit is something that may have come out of the committee. And Councilman Sleeper, you may remember a little better than I do as well. But right now, there is one parking space required per dwelling unit, except that if you have more than one, except that if you have only one, you don't have to have any parking. So you essentially get the first parking space for free for, for the first dwelling unit. And so that was something where I think the committee felt that there's a lot of pressure in the downtown for parking and it might be a good idea to require at least one parking space for every dwelling unit in the central business district. That's certainly a change that this council can make to, to go back to, to not requiring a parking space for the first dwelling unit, if that's something that you all prefer. I think I can also address the parking requirement that is there for short-term rentals. That came out of some committee discussion. It was really more tailored to the single-family residential districts. Initially, it was the committee recommendation to return to requiring only two parking spaces per dwelling. Right now, as probably some of you know, we require a parking space for each bedroom in our single-family residential neighborhoods. And the committee was feeling like this had the effect of creating residential parking lots, which was not something that the committee recommended and not something that Williams &amp; Works recommended. However, when we brought that out of committee to the planning commission, that, that recommendation was not supported by the majority of the planning commission. And the parking requirement for a single-family residential was left as is. And those two lines in the parking table, I believe it's section 2302. I can't remember off the top of my head. But, but it would be simple enough for the city council to, to make a recommendation or to make a motion to strike that verbiage requiring additional parking for short-term rentals.
Okay.
If I can address, so for the lot coverage, the motion at the planning commission was to insert the current language of the zoning ordinance into the, replace what was in the recommendation and add balconies. Balconies was stricken and then measuring from the drip line was stricken and replaced with measuring to the walls. But the current lot coverage language is significantly different than what is in the zoning ordinance before us. It doesn't, decks should have been reinserted into lot coverage. And so, I mean, I'd be happy to meet with you later or I can resend you my comments. But what isn't, what is currently for lot coverage is not what the planning commission had passed in the amendments.
I, I will, I will check my notes on that. And if you have, yeah, I mean, I don't recall them making that many changes to that specific definition. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, so with, so as far as the bakery is concerned, so that wasn't something that was brought up during, at all, until tonight. It's my understanding that that is a non-conforming use under the existing ordinance. So it'd be, it would, so that would continue forward. This zoning ordinance doesn't propose to alter that status at all. If that's a concern for that property owner, they would be welcome to, you know, apply for a, for a rezoning, either conditional or otherwise, to attempt to bring that property closer into compliance. Not something that planning commission can entertain. This zoning ordinance does not affect that specific property. It would be non-conforming before and it would, I believe, still be non-conforming under the existing draft.
Wait, let's hear from Kelly first.
So the Bundy's Bakery in this current zoning ordinance is a unique situation where it's almost exclusionary zoning. The, the way the language is read is that basically this, there is permission for a single bakery to exist and for none others to exist in, in the RM1 district. And so the, the language was removed from that section of the new zoning ordinance. And we believe that there are more appropriate ways to zone for that use. And we, as staff, can support the continuation of Bundy's Bakery. And we have met with Rachel and Jim Sankofsky and have talked about some, some potential paths forward. But retaining language that allowed only one bakery in one location in the, in the multifamily district was not appropriate.
Thank you.
But, so it is currently lawfully existing?
Bundy's Bakery is, yes.
And so there is a change, a substantive change that?
Whether or not it's substantive probably depends on your perspective.
But that's what, so I'm just, this was an overhaul. Much of it was done behind closed doors. We got a clean slate without any marked up copy. We got a table that had substantive changes, but the substance changes were not identified. And one other item that I hadn't listed was the home occupation, which currently if there are going, is going to be traffic, clients coming, you have to have a special land use. It's been moved to permitted as of right. We're just seeing an increase in commercial activity in our residential districts. And I do have a concern with that because that was never identified as a substantive change. And that was a substantive change.
Wasn't that discussed at a planning commission meeting? Okay.
That was, and accessory dwellings are now required by special land use. But I think it's warranted for a more robust discussion by the elected officials of what activities we want to occur in our residential districts.
Attorney?
Evening, Mayor and council persons. Cliff Bloom from the city attorney's office. If I could talk just a little bit, procedure. I think as the council well knows, the issue in front of it is, do you feel that the zoning ordinance is at a point now to schedule the public hearing? And, you know, sometimes, obviously legislative bodies make the decision at the same night as the public hearing, but you don't have to. There, there certainly might be other issues that come up during the public hearing that you might want to change. So I think it's certainly not necessary that everything be perfect before you schedule the public hearing. But I think the issue is, do you believe this draft is, is, is to the point where it could be scheduled for a public hearing? Keeping in mind, there might still be tweaks after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Clarification?
Go ahead.
Can this be slightly modified from now until the public hearing? Or does it have to go to the public hearing?
No, no. If, if, if there's specific modifications that the planning commi, or, excuse me, that the city council wants to have before the public hearing, subject to staff and the planner having time to do it and turn it around and not only get it to you folks, but get it on the website or for public availability. So there's a reasonable time period for the public to see it. That could be done.
Well, some things were just some inconsistencies and hopefully we can resolve the lot coverage issue.
Yeah, I just, even with small things, I think you would agree, it wouldn't be good to have the draft available only like two days before the public hearing.
And I think our staff needs to go back and look at the minutes of meetings and see what, what exactly happened and what the majority wanted, so.
And, and I did that before tonight, looking at the minutes.
Okay, we're moving on. Is there a motion to move this to a public hearing?
I move to approve a public hearing on December 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes? What's your name, Andy? I'm serious. Are you, are you staying on for the, the next item?
I can if you need me to, but.
I just have a question for you, as long as you're here.
Sure, yeah.
And that, as long as you're here and as long as we have an attorney, there's been some confusion about the authority of our zoning administrator. And I know some, there's confusion with city council. There's confusion with, you know, people who are speaking up in the audience. So can you? in the audience. So can you clear that up for us now while you're here?
Well, broadly speaking, the zoning administrator's job is to administer the zoning ordinance. That sounds sort of self-explanatory, it sounds self-evident, right? But, so I mean, typically, you know, the person, a member of the public approaches the, you know, zoning administrator with a question or with an application or a potential project or something like that revolving around the zoning ordinance. And, you know, and the zoning administrator sort of, you know, guides them through that process. That may be providing some sort of, you know, advice in terms of like what your site plan has to look at or what it has to be to, to get on the agenda or get it in front of the Planning Commission and eventually city council potentially for a decision. So to me, they're sort of the, so they do issue permits for, for zoning permits. So if somebody wants to build a single-family house or a two-family house or accessory dwelling or whatever, or accessory building, not dwelling. That's all things that the zoning administrator can approve. Other larger projects, I think, I think they're, they're more of a, you know, touch point and sort of guide throughout the process and, you know, someone who can advise the Planning Commission on, on background and whether or not things are meeting the standards of the zoning ordinance. And they're really there to, to, you know, effectuate the, you know, proper application of the standards. And Cliff, I don't know if you want to add on to that further, but that's kind of how I see it in a nutshell.
I, I think that's a very good summary. I think we've got gatekeeper where applications come in, the zoning administrator determines what pigeonhole they go into. And then there's interpretations. If someone thinks they're entitled to a permit or don't need a permit, the zoning administrator makes the decision and that person can appeal it to the ZBA. Or if a permit's issued and a neighbor disagrees and is a agreed party, they can then interpret that, or excuse me, appeal it to the ZBA. And then the third item is zoning administrator. And I guess I've never asked staff whether you have a separate ordinance enforcement officer versus the zoning administrator writes the tickets?
Yes. We do have enforcement officers. Oh, excuse me.
You're fine, yes.
So, you know, some of the issues you've heard tonight are concerns by some citizens about enforceability. And ultimately, that's probably a city council decision on how aggressive you want to enforce certain ordinances within the budgetary constraints. And short-term rentals are a good example. If, if a majority of the city council believes that maybe a little more aggressive enforcement is warranted, you would direct staff to do that. And obviously you'd have to increase the budget for that. So we've got gatekeeper, interpreter and potentially enforcer or enforcer in conjunction with the ordinance enforcement officer.
And I thought I read that her authority comes from state law.
Both state law and your zoning ordinance, although your current zoning ordinance isn't as clear as it should be.
Okay.
I believe your new one is, but state law says that the zoning administrator is all three things.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, I think it's important that maybe we have a motion to introduce the, the draft. Usually we, we do both of the same motion, but
Oh, okay.
We'll need a motion to introduce the draft.
If I could just, Cliff, so as city council members, we also have the authority to interpret the law, correct?
With all due respect, no, not the zoning ordinance. Case law is pretty clear. In fact, there's actually a case out there where, I think it was in a township, the zoning board of appeals made a decision that the township board didn't like. The township board sued their own zoning administrator and the court said that it goes zoning administrator, ZBA Circuit Court. Other ordinances, I think the city council would have discretion, but in zoning...
Like the code?
Potentially. Yeah, we'd have to look at each one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we need another motion?
I would move to introduce the new zoning ordinance for the city of South Haven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Per se?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, number 12. The city council will be asked to consider an introduction of an ordinance to amend sections 201.12, 201.19, 1743, and 1744 of the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals and to schedule a public hearing for December 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have brought to the city council the short-term rental zoning ordinance. Now, this is a bifurcated process. We have the regulatory ordinance and then we have the zoning ordinance. This zoning ordinance, we've been drafting and working on earlier this year. And at the June 3rd meeting, we sent this to the Planning Commission for their review. The Planning Commission has been reviewing this and they have made some changes and some suggestions here. And I do want to note, I know we've gotten a lot of comments tonight about term limits, rental term limits and occupancy. The occupancy is no longer seated in the zoning ordinance. That is now going to be in the regulatory ordinance. And moreover, there is a suggestion from the Planning Commission to further consider options to restrict the number of stays or rental periods, but that is not in this draft document. So I know that Cliff is here to answer any questions and then obviously Kelly is here, but there has been some substantive changes in here such as the cap and what's included in the cap and what's not included in the cap. So if we can have a brief kind of discussion about what is in there and of course, any changes the Planning Commission did make. Kelly and Cliff?
I'll go, that's okay, Anna Mayor. Just in general, if you compare the version that the city council sent to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission has recommended back to the city council, there actually are not a whole lot of changes between the Planning Commission and city council. And Kelly's done a good job of outlining them. And I would submit, in actuality, other than the caps and a few other things, there's not great differences between what's already in the zoning ordinance and this. I think the changes are important. So just in general, the definition sections have been tweaked and tightened up. And I think both the city council and the Planning Commission had some great ideas on that. The business units, essentially the annual allocation process, what some people call the lottery, has been removed, given all the issues with that and the amount of work for staff and so on. And there are now caps on the business units, which are not currently proposed for the personal units. And there are certain exclusions. With regard to the personal units, it was tightened up to say that in order to be able to do a personal unit rental, you have to have a PRE, personal residence exemption and physical occupancy. Overall, there's some language about the fees, the exempted developments, a couple of them were taken out. And I believe Harbor Club and Trailside are the only two remaining. They're exempt from the caps till they hit 75% development and so on, and then they are subject to it. Also, there's language in there, what happens if STR is destroyed by natural calamity or otherwise. I think one thing that's important, I think the council knows, but for the audience to also hear is, you've been working hard on three things simultaneously. Obviously, the overall zoning ordinance, this section of the zoning ordinance for short-term rentals and a totally separate non-zoning regulatory ordinance. Many of the concerns you heard tonight from some folks in the audience probably go to the, to the licensing ordinance, which as I understand is not scheduled for a public hearing. The city council's still working on that. So again, a, a lot of the concerns actually are not in the short-term rental zoning amendments. And again, some of the concerns were what the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, I believe, based on what they said, didn't want to slow this down, but they had some other suggestions. And they made those suggestions and it's in the report, there are about six of them. Interestingly enough, only two of them talk about making changes in the zoning amendments. The others, they were silent and they might have implicitly known some of those could go into the regulatory ordinance. So again, by all indications, the only thing that is going to be up for public hearing in early December, whenever you decide to do it, will be the zoning amendments, not the, not the licensing or regulatory ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I would like to move that the city council consider directing the city manager to direct legal counsel to provide by 12/2/24 or a mutually agreeable date alternative amendment to our short-term rental zoning ordinance, where all future registrations are issued under only regulatory. A cap is set at 534 with all short-term rental regulations counting towards that cap. Overlay districts are proposed and a density is addressed for at least R1A and R1B zoning. And I'd be glad anytime you want to explain the rationale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Joe?
Okay. As we all heard here, there seems to be...
Joe, your, your mic.
Okay. Tonight I thought, brought out if anything, this apparent divide between what I think short-term rental owners want and maybe what council wants and maybe what residents. And I think there's a middle ground. And so what I'm trying to do is preserve the land use rights. In other words, in plain English, short-term rental owners will not lose and cannot lose their license. Cliff, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere. They will keep those under the zoning. I want to also address the neighborhood nuisances and enforcement issues identified by residents and to support tourism, ensure that STRs are encouraged in our downtown and traditional resort areas. That's the reason for the overlay. Sorry, and that's the reason for the overlay. So the rationale is try to find this middle ground that we can address all three. And tell me if I'm okay to talk about it. When I met with Jeff individually and also with Letitia, can I talk about that?
Yeah, obviously as long as no confidences are mentioned, I'm sure you won't.
Be very careful. He just said what I'm proposing seemed to be very acceptable. In other words, moving all future short-term rental into regulatory, not just occupancy and things we've talked about, move it all into regulatory. Because the frustrating part for residents in this town is every time we talk about short-term rentals, I have to tell a resident, look them right in the eye and say, I'm sorry, we cannot change licensing because of zoning. If a person has a license, the permit, it goes with the property into the house, to the next buyer, unless they turn it down. That whole thing is different than I think any other town along the coast. So we can't undo what we have and it's not fair to take anyone's permit that already has it, that owns a short-term rental. But going forward, we should put it all under regulatory and have overlays. So where people are fine with short-term rentals, let them have it. And for example, we could put it right along, and Mary, maybe you can help me on the, the boundaries, but right on the old historic area, right up to the river. And allow who wants unlimited short-term rentals, let them have it. But the rest of Ward 3, all Ward 1 and Ward 2, we can restrict it going forward by not taking anyone's license away. So by putting it under regulatory, in my opinion, we address what the concerns of residents are and protect the owners of short-term rentals. And help tourism, because we're going to leave it with an overlay, it'll be unlimited where traditionally tourists are renting properties and where the other property owners are not upset about it. And I've talked to realtors, I've talked to residents, I've talked to people in the tourist area. They said, that's fine. Not saying that represents everyone, but I've tried to listen and come up with something that gives us the ability to go forward. And regulatory does that.
Joe, if I'm, if I'm understanding you, so you want an overlay district in certain areas where there was resort activity. So does that mean that those would be new STRs business ones, so they wouldn't be subject to the cap?
Yes.
Okay.
So, excuse me, so there was...
Oh, wait, and if I could just finish. So the 534, you didn't question Cliff, but that equals 15% of the 3,650 dwellings, which goes back to what Planning had, which is the 2020 U.S. census. That's in one of the sheets that I got from Planning that said that's what they came up with. So I'm trying to take what Planning did and also incorporate on this.
Are you done?
Yes, thanks.
So there was deliberation in a closed meeting?
Well, I think...
That was attorney-client privilege?
My understanding is these were informal meetings.
Okay. And so we're just hearing about this now?
Yes. If I could address...
What?
Sorry, Wendy and I were talking and she...
Go ahead, Cliff.
Excuse me. Just to address the, the councilperson, what you said is certainly doable, but the issue is timing. And, and I understand it's more important to get it right than necessarily get it through. But what you're discussing is really major. I mean, we would have to do major rewrites of both the zoning and the regulatory. And then the question arises on whether the zoning, you'd have to refer it back to the Planning Commission because it's pretty, pretty substantial changes. Probably not. It, it's interesting, you're having a public hearing, which not all cities do. And so there is an argument that since you're having a public hearing, even if you make major changes, you wouldn't have to refer it back to the Planning Commission. But that's not entirely clear. So again, I, I'm not, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with the merits of what you say, but I think it's, it, the odds of that getting done over Thanksgiving in two weeks is just about zero because we'd have to rewrite, probably major. And again, if that's, if that's what the council thinks is right, it's better to get it right.
I guess it's frustrating because when I spoke to your partner, Jeff, he said, anything, and he may have not really thought it through, but anything you need, we can get it done within one week. Am I right, Letitia?
That's correct.
She was in the room with me. So I'm not trying to push you, but again, to your point, I'd rather have this done right and get both sides happy and both sides that can live with this than push something through that is, as Kate one time, I said, geez, it seems like neither side is happy. And Kate said, well, that's kind of normal. I don't want it to be normal. I want people to feel each side gave something and we're protecting those businesses, protecting tourism, but we're moving in the right direction to helping the residents.
If I could address just one other thing. And you and I have talked about this quite a bit. And I think you and I find it a fascinating topic. Under zoning, we can't cut off vested lawful rights. Under the regulatory ordinance, you can, to a point, I'm not sure you can, i- if they're not violating, I'm not sure if it's in the regulatory ordinance, you can cut it off. So when you say a cap, are you implying that the hundred or so other ones would stop? They'd have to stop? Or are you just saying, no, we'll set the cap at that? There's still lawful, non-conforming use and through attrition, we get down to the lower number?
We could do it that way, yes.
Attrition?
Yeah.
I'm going to let George speak.
And I, wait, just going to finish answering the question, but I do want the personal, business, PUDs, condos, all in that cap or that number, the 15% of all households.
And I think...
So we no longer have to differentiate because that's another issue that residents have overwhelmingly said, why are these PUDs different? Other than the ones that have already been started, why do we have to treat them different? Or the condos, especially the personal that can get abused.
And I think council members, as I think as you saw in the report, I know that was one of the recommendations of the Planning Commission, overall cap.
I'm just going to let George speak.
So if I understand it right, we've been working for six months with the city attorney, with staff, trying to come up with both a zoning and regulatory ordinance. We sent a zoning ordinance to Planning Commission. It came back very similar to what we sent. And now you're wanting to start all over again?
Not start all over, I just want to...
Well, and you want it all done in two weeks?
Let me answer your question. We have changed and we have gone back and forth for two years on short-term rentals. And it seems like we're not... and it seems like we're not making either side really happy. And if we can come up with an idea that can address all sides and give this council and this city the ability to better manage short-term rentals under regulatory, it is worth that extra effort, in my opinion. But you can vote me down, whatever council thinks.
Well, my concern, as in the past, is that, you know, suddenly you're bringing this up. It wasn't on the agenda for people to look at. We haven't had time to study your idea. So it's not being helpful to the voters, to people in our town, people who are interested. Because here it is, you're bringing it up. We hadn't, we don't have information about it, and nobody else in town did either.
Well, the town elected us, the town talks to us on a regular basis, so...
But it wasn't on the agenda.
Well, there's a lot of things on the agenda we can add to the agenda. There's no problem with putting something on the agenda.
There is a problem with putting something on the agenda, because everyone that plans for this meeting doesn't know what's on the agenda, if you do that. And that's exactly what's happened right now. You added this major thing to the agenda, no one knows anything about it. It's what you said you developed, working with other people, but no one else knows anything about it.
And you haven't talked to our staff about it. So the staff has had no input.
Well, we were told to meet with the lawyer individually. We did it. I did it even with another counsel, had two meetings with another councilperson, and the lawyer, in fact, said it wouldn't be that hard to do.
I have a question. I don't even know, what is a historic resort area? I mean, I'm hearing vague terms about Monroe Park and along North Shore Drive. How are we supposed to draft an ordinance in two weeks that has those in there? That's vague. It's very vague. I don't, I have no idea what that means.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mary.
Thank you. I mean, I, as I was looking through everything, coming through Planning Commission, as I've heard from people and looking at what's coming through the code, I mean, I sat down and I have provided very detailed comments. I've sent them to Kate, I've sent them to Kelly. Kate has sent them to all of you. And Kate did send them to legal counsel, but it's my understanding legal counsel was instructed not to analyze them, so I don't...
We were not going to reanalyze a brand-new zoning ordinance that was not sent by this body to the Planning Commission at the last minute. We were reviewing a zoning ordinance that this council sent to the Planning Commission. For us to start reviewing a zoning ordinance that you drafted was just beyond my scope of trying to start that process all over again. So yes, the zoning ordinance that you put together, that you just drafted yourself, I did not ask the city attorney to review.
Wendy.
Okay. I am not 100% sure I'm going to get this right, since we've been here since seven. But I felt like, at one point, we did talk about a cap, we just didn't have the number fixed at that time, and it's just been a question mark to get it through. So I don't care if it's 534 or something else. I don't understand why that's problematic. The overlay, I'm looking on page 83 of our packet, and it says the Planning Commission made a motion for us to consider number three permissive overlay zones on the north side along the lake shore and the riverfront, e.g., Monroe Park, for rental occupancy, yada, yada. So to me, that sounds similar to what Joe was saying.
And that's where I got it.
And then the last one, about moving from zoning to regulatory in the future, I really thought we had talked about that early on as something that a lot of us wanted to see happen, but whether or not it could happen was the question, so...
First of all, the, my understanding was that when we met with the attorney, he said, "We cannot repeat what happened in that meeting." So that was attorney-client privileged. And it sounds like there was deliberation going on, which, that's not right. You can't deliberate in a closed meeting without the public present.
There wasn't a majority of council. I don't know if that...
I know, but still, it was a meeting where the public was not included. That's against the Open Meetings Act.
I'm not sure about that, but...
It sounded more like a general question about what other jurisdictions have done along the lake shore, and I think the majority of jurisdictions...
It was deliberation, because he came out with an idea.
If I may, I'm just a little kind of stuck here on what was proposed, what's come back to us from the city, from the Planning Commission, would have taken the exempted down to pretty much a couple categories. The attached condominiums, all attached condominiums would be a part of the flat cap. Harbor Club and then Trailside would not be subject to the cap, so they would remain as exempted. Also exempted would be personal STRs. If this motion by Joe to, I guess, carve out an overlay from Monroe Park and then any attached condo along Lake Michigan, Black River, I'd have, even if Cliff could draft it, I still have to get my plant, my staff, to figure out what properties these apply to. Are we talking about resorts? Are we talking about historical resorts? Are we talking about anybody who ever had a resort anywhere in that area? I guess I am very, I'm very lost as to what you're asking for.
Joe, are you going to be comfortable with me contacting the Attorney General?
I asked at the very beginning, can I discuss...
Yeah, I think, Mayor, I think, and I don't have a computer in mind, so I can't reproduce everything the council member said, but I think it was just a general idea.
Right. Yeah, he did not give me any specifics.
I will speak to Jeff when I get back in the office. I think probably it was a very general discussion.
And now it resulted in a motion?
Yeah, now whether there's a second and so on, but I think, again, to get back, we pride ourselves in being able to turn things around, and we think throughout this 10-month process, we have, I mean, we've put in a lot of time on this. But even just moving so much of this from the zoning ordinance to the regulatory ordinance would be time-consuming, and you're still working on it on the side. So we've got the issue of the zoning, if we redo that, do we have to send it back to the Planning Commission for their comment? Do they have to have another public hearing? But even putting that aside, moving a lot of this stuff from the zoning to the regulatory, you folks are still working on that with staff. So I think it's a timing matter. Again, I'm not urging, "Don't take the time to do it," but the council should just be aware that it's of necessity, if that's the way you're going, to do it thoughtfully is going to take some time.
Kelly, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm a little bit dismayed at this process, and I feel that the Planning Commission will be dismayed and upset by this turn of events. This body sent texts that you all worked on unanimously to the Planning Commission in June. A similar, a similar thing happened with building height several months ago. And the Planning Commission did its job over several months and meetings and hours and hours of time. And they did their job and sent the texts back to you. They did the job that you asked for. And I think it's a big ask to ask volunteers to continue to sit at a table when they do their job and then their input isn't respected and isn't valued.
I don't know how you can say it's not respected. This is a document from Planning, and I took some of this right from Planning, the overlay, which Kate just asked, "Where is it?" I didn't find it right away, but here it is. This is from Planning.
I think the difference...
Planning also talked about hardship, they also talked about six-month, all that's in here. I tried to take information from Planning and incorporate it in an idea that I thought would be beneficial. Let us vote. If we don't, if we don't want to do it...
Joe, none of that's in the ordinance.
Pardon me?
None of that is in the ordinance. That wasn't in the ordinance we sent to Planning Commission. It wasn't in the ordinance that came back. It's the suggestions, it's ideas.
Right. And I took those ideas, my own ideas, and put together an idea. That's all I'm doing tonight.
Yep.
Well...
Excuse me. Excuse me, Jeff. I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Where to begin? Okay. Tonight, a lot of people were here, and they were speaking about the city manager forcing this, that she was forcing this. And that's not the case. We were forcing her to get us this, because we have a moratorium that's coming, and we wanted to get something done before the moratorium expires. Now, if you're looking at this packet, and it starts on page 82, at the bottom part, these are suggestions from the Planning Commission about things that we should think about. We should think about an overlay, we should think about limiting to one rental per week. These are just things they thought of and would like us to think of. But the rest of this is exactly what we've asked for and what will solve a lot of our problems. And Joe, I can't support what you're going to do, because the Planning Commission hasn't looked at it, like Kelly has said, but what I heard you say was, "If we put in this overlay, you're okay with unlimited STRs in that area." And I don't think anybody wants any more STRs. And that one, I don't think anyone wants more STRs. So, yeah, going back, I think we need to finish the work that we were set out to do, because we've got all kinds of other issues about violations of the Open Meeting Act, you know, not noticing the motion that you made, was there deliberation behind closed doors, it violates the Open Meeting Act. I think we need to stick to what's on our agenda, and we should be addressing this piece of legislation. If you, you know, would like to continue with that motion, I'll have to vote no, but I mean, there are some substance in there that I'd be happy to talk about when the public's properly noticed, you know, when we get feedback from PC on those drastic changes you're looking to make. I don't want to say drastic, with those changes you're trying to make. Certainly would love to get the public's input on that, you know, get time to read it and understand it, so I can ask questions of the staff. But I think what you're asking is way too drastic, and we need to stick to this piece of legislation that's in front of us, that's been vetted by staff, by legal, by Planning Commission, and it just needs us to move it forward before the moratorium expires. That's my thought.
Okay. Any more comments? Wendy?
I have a question, which is, can we possibly schedule a work session or workshop to discuss these things ahead of the public hearing, so that we have a chance to have a better dialogue and kind of come to some conclusion? Then do the public hearing based on that.
Cliff?
You absolutely can. I think what's driving the early December is two things, that you want to get this finished. But the moratorium, I mean, you can extend the moratorium again if you want. It's always a little dangerous to keep doing it. We don't know the outer limits of when a court would say it's not appropriate. When you do have that public hearing, it might be appropriate if the Planning Commission Chair is willing to be there too, so that he can maybe give some insight in addition to your liaison as to why they did certain things and didn't others.
Thank you.
I would note that the personal STR, sorry, the personal STR moratorium is set to expire, I think, December 6th. So if council's not going to be introducing this zoning ordinance, then we're going to have to be talking about a moratorium extension. And quite honestly, I'm not sure how council could introduce this ordinance with additional language that has not been written.
Mary?
So the Planning Commission did discuss, when you were there, on September 5th, you know, coming back to the Planning Commission with density and separateness, overlay district. There was concern about attached condos, but that part got deleted, so that became an issue. Lawfully in existence, I've always had an issue with that. Should there be a floor? Because I'm concerned that without a definite number, there's the misunderstanding that all short-term rentals are to be eliminated, and that was never the intent. And the other two were already addressed. So I had expected, based on the motion from city council to send this to Planning Commission, that there would be more discussion at Planning Commission with regard to these items, but these items never made it into the version that came back to Planning Commission. And I did share my comments with the chair, and it was his position that he would rather the city council look at it than the Planning Commission for the first time.
Right. And I would feel better looking at the minutes and seeing exactly what motions passed and what failed.
So that's fine, if you don't want to take my word for it, but the thing is, these are in the minutes, they were amended to be specifically added, so it's actually, you have to look at the October 3rd minutes to see how the September 5th minutes were corrected. And I had just expected to have more in the ordinance, and I thought that the intent was always to move as much to regulatory as possible, and I was not seeing as much moved as I had expected.
Well, and your comments are not on the motion, so we're going to move forward on the motion?
Well, actually, they are on the motion, because the motion goes to directly these types of things.
Let's have a roll call?
Can you repeat?
I think we need to repeat the motion. I don't, I don't think I have a good written, written down, and I'm not sure if Megan does either.
I have the gist of it, but the word-for-word would be appreciated.
Can we have the word-for-word motion one more time?
Joe? The motion.
Okay. City council to consider directing the city manager to direct legal counsel to provide by 12-2-24 or a mutually agreeable date, alternative amendments to our short-term rental zoning ordinance where all future registrations are issued under regulatory. A cap is set at 534 with all STR registrations count, all, meaning personal, all of them. Registrations counting towards the cap, overlay districts are proposed, doesn't have to be done right now, and a density is addressed for at least R1A and R1B zoning districts.
And how is density to be addressed?
Pardon me?
You said, does your motion say density is to be addressed?
Yeah, I put down where overlay districts are proposed and density is addressed.
And how is density to be addressed?
Well, we can come up with one, but I'm thinking like 300 feet between short-term rentals in Ward One and Two.
And that's for all new STRs?
All new, of course. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say, "Of course," but in all, going forward.
I'm sorry.
This is simply to say, going forward, we can make these changes.
They need the motion, so just stick with them.
Sorry, that's, yeah, so that's, I'm sorry, so instead of 300 feet, you said, between, or was it 350? I guess I've lost there. The density, I'm sorry, the distance between the two?
Yeah, so for, other than the overlay area, for the rest of Ward Three, Ward One and Ward Two, going forward, we'd make sure there's 300 feet between short-term rentals. So people stop saying there's five and six on one block. That's the intent.
Megan, do you have the motion?
Not with the additional at the end there, with the 300 feet.
Can you read it one more time? Just what you have down there.
Oh, what I have?
Yep.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. So to direct the city manager to direct legal counsel to provide by 12-2 or a mutually agreed-upon date amendments to the ordinance, and then that's where all future certificates will be issued under the regulatory ordinance, and then the overlay districts, that's where I started to get confused, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat, Joe, can you repeat the part about the overlay districts, we can get that in the motion?
Sure. So over, let me back up. Registrations counting towards the cap, comma, overlay districts are proposed, and a density is addressed for at least R1A, R1B zoning districts. And I got the overlay right from what was proposed from the Planning Commission.
All right, let's hear it one more time, Megan.
Okay. I just, okay. To direct the city manager to direct legal counsel to provide by December 2nd or a mutually agreed-upon date amendments to the ordinance where future certificates are issued under the code, the regulatory court of ordinances with overlay districts. And I'm so sorry, I'm just getting so confused with the motion. I very much apologize.
Don't apologize.
I'm just getting lost there.
Want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Read it slowly.
I'll back up to amendments to our short-term zoning ordinance where all future registrations are... are issued under only regulatory. A cap is set at 534, with all STR registrations counting towards that cap. Overlay districts are proposed, and a density is addressed for at least R1A, R1B zoning.
Am I able to just have the written copy? I'm sorry. I can't.
I got a little scribble on there.
And then, please keep the written copy for your files.
Yes. Okay. So, do you want me to just go ahead and read?
Yeah.
Okay. So, move city council to consider directing the city manager to direct legal counsel to provide by 12-2-24 or a mutually agreed-upon date, alternate amendments to our STR zoning ordinance where all future registrations are issued under only regulatory. A cap is set at 534, with all STR registrations counting toward the cap. Overlay districts are proposed, and a density is addressed for at least R1A and R1B zoning districts.
Okay. Roll call?
Okay. So, we have Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
I'm not gonna be able to turn this new language around in two weeks.
That's fine.
Because I think there's a substantive, there's a pretty big change here about requiring all registrations now to be subject to the cap, instead of, and so there apparently would be no exemption. I guess I'm a little confused. It's gonna take some time to chew on this. So, I'm not sure when we're gonna be able to bring this back.
And I think you should get legal counsel for that, too.
According to our zoning ordinance, substantive changes are required to be sent back through the planning commission.
I thought we already had a cap with a placeholder, so I'm...
If we'd have passed this, we would have.
Yeah, so then it's in there.
If we'd have passed this, we haven't even passed that yet.
Cliff?
Well, yeah.
Cliff?
If I can, we will carry out with all of our efforts the directive of the city council. The problem is, though, with Thanksgiving and so on in between, it's really weak. And we're gonna have to redraft both ordinances. We're gonna have to redraft the zoning and the regulatory ordinance, because we're gonna have to move a lot. And again, I'm not, this is no implication that that doesn't have merit. It might very well have merit. But just the logistics of this, it's just impossible to do it, even if we had two full. And then you would still want to have it, so you folks could go through it before the meeting in early December and the members of the public. So, I think in light of this, you really might want to consider extending the moratorium, even if it's not for that long.
So, I know the motion was for 12-2 to bring this language back. I'm just gonna tell you, it's just not gonna happen in December. So, it looks like we're looking for January to resume STR draft language. That's the best I got currently.
So, where are we with number 12 now?
Number 12, we have the motion. I think there, we may have to do a modification that this will not, I just don't have this available for 12-2. So, I know that was the motion, that's what passed on the 4th revote. But it's gonna take some time to kind of parse through what was changed. And of course, staff and city attorney will get some draft language put together and then bring that back to city council. So, as far as I'm, I understand is that we're done with STRs for some time until we get new language on both ordinances, correct?
I think it's important, though, to concentrate on the moratorium. We've got to look, I think we've got two of them out there, don't we? One for personal, one for business.
That's right. Personal STRs, moratorium is, will be, will need to be extended at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll want to make sure that at the next council meeting, that's dealt with appropriately.
Okay.
Mayor, Cliff, I just have one comment on the ordinance I wanted to bring up, even though it's probably not gonna change. But it has to do with the personal short-term rental. It's the last section where it talks about the PRE for personal short-term.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, that section starts out, each short-term rental, personal dwelling unit must actually be physically occupied and inhabited by the owners of the unit involved. And then we struck out the 180 days, but we left that first sentence in there. So, when I read that, it implies that each personal short-term rental needs to be occupied.
So, what you're saying is really the 180 days is getting back in through the back door?
No, there is no, so it needs to be occupied all the time to be a personal short-term rental. We should strike out that whole first part of that sentence, because we don't say anything about limits on occupation. So, you can go either way. And just by having the PRE exemption, we include some, and I made this comment before when we were looking at this, just by having the PRE in there implies some amount of occupation. And I'm good with just that.
It incorporates all of the law. Something did happen in the drafts, and I don't know if Mary found it, for some reason, the planning commission version had the language before the council changed it. So, we thought this went back, but obviously it didn't. So, I made a note for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think just the 180 got removed, not the whole.
Not the whole sentence.
And just with the 180 gone, just...
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on.
Madam Mayor, may I be excused? I've got a bit of a drive.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. It is time for citizens in the audience to make comments on items not on the agenda. And you have up to five minutes.
Lisa Crouppier, 561 Indiana Avenue. I just want to remind everyone that the city manager's evaluation will be taking place on December 2. A word to citizens, this is your time to make sure you contact your city council rep and let them know problems or negative experiences you've had with the city manager, as well as positive experiences. The city council is the governing body who hires, evaluates, and terminates the city manager if necessary. And the city council represents us, the citizens. They need our feedback. So, please, citizens, let your city council reps know how you feel, so they can make an informed decision regarding the retaining or not of the city manager. The city council representative contact info is on the city website main page in the pull-down menu on the upper right under government. I'm going to stop now, because I don't want to risk being shouted down by the time exclaiming "mayor." Words and actions matter. Just because you're the mayor does not mean you have this platform to publicly humiliate any of us. Tonight, you singled out an audience member and me for looking at each other. So, stop it. Your rude treatment of citizens is unacceptable. Thank you.
I am gonna be very careful about...
Say your name and address.
Typhy No, 40-year resident of South Haven, 883 St. Joseph Street. I'm gonna be careful not to say, I'm not trying to address anything that was on the agenda. I do want to bring forward an idea for council to consider. I have been here a long time. I've seen the progression, regression, and also potential future of our community. I do this at a corporate level. I look at ideas, incentivized programs between two companies to try and make a bridge, a gap. I'm willing to do that here. I've offered that assistance. I've offered my voice. Annie, during your campaign, I offered you a lot of ideas of things that could potentially win my mom's vote, my uncle's vote for mayor. I just want to bring that forward. It seems as if there's vacuums of conversations. I think everybody that has done any work over the course of the 40 years my family has been here to improve our community, I'm just saying, please consider taking the time to actually reach out to the people that are here. I have not, Joe, today was probably one of the very first times I've talked to you, and I've lived in the ward. The 40 years. Latisha, I have not met you. My mom has lived there. We were, we were sponsored by the Catholic Church to come here and have a future here. Please, reach out to the ones that are here and have an impact. I had the impact. We are, I'm happy to meet and spend time, because this affects my mom's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Typhy.
Bill Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I am, I would like to see if I can get an update on the RFP, I believe that's what it is, in regards to Overton property. Is there an update on that?
I don't have an update, no.
Do you?
It's published.
It's published?
Yeah, I don't want to take up your time, so I guess I can answer that after your comments are done.
Okay. Well, anyway, I am more, I'm concerned about affordable housing. I've lived here, as I said before, 58 years. And it is a little saddening to see trailside takeoff on property, on land that I know was contaminated or is contaminated, just as much as Overton. And that developer has the green light. And you can tell those houses are gonna be up pretty quick. And yet, we're years later, still wrestling over trying to get affordable housing on Overton. That is very saddening to see. And knowing that there are a lot of people in our community, living within our community, that are staying with family members. We have a lot of kids that are homeless, staying in places that it's hard for them to do, and yet try to study, get their study. I mean, I think we're losing focus a little bit, too, when it comes to the issue with affordable housing. So, I'm just asking this community to have the same drive that I'm hearing for STRs for affordable housing. And I'm not seeing it. So, that's troublesome to me, because I hear the stories. I hear the stories that you, from displaced people or people that are looking for just places to rent. Rental in South Haven, you go on Zillow, rentals in South Haven are $3,000 for some homes. Anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. You're lucky if you can find a place for $1,600. And yet, we're dragging our feet when it comes to Overton. But you get a developer over a trailside that are, that's putting up, getting ready to put up homes, not affordable homes, because I'm hearing that the price range is gonna be anywhere from $350 on up. That's going to eliminate a lot of these jobs that supposedly STRs are offering, because those are only seasonal jobs. We need affordable housing in South Haven. And if the developer can put up housing across the street from Overton, less than 50 yards away, certainly we can do what it takes to get that job done, to get that project off the ground at Overton. So, you know, excuse me if I seem a little irritated, but I've sat in these meetings, these council meetings for years, and it seems to be, I'm losing a little confidence in this residents of South Haven, because they can come out here in great numbers and push stuff that benefits them, and they can't look past their own front doors and see the hardship of other people. You're very aggressive when it comes to certain things. What about, what about the issues that are facing families that are displaced? If you want this to be an all-inclusion city, embrace everybody, make a way for that to happen. If not, we're losing diversity in age, race, and other areas. It's your old job to try to figure it out, and we've been kicking the can down the road long enough.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sure, Sarah McHugh, sorry, 429 Superior Street. I purposely haven't attended these meetings in a long time, because I can never get my two council members to ever call me back. I know we've debated on that. But boy, did I learn tonight, that because a simple item really caught everybody off guard, but four of you evidently had spoken and came together without letting your other fellow council members know. That's incredibly concerning, citizens of South Haven. So, it's quarter to 11. You know, I get up at 4:00 a.m. tomorrow, but I'm grateful that I'm here, because I've got my eye on you, and I have my eye on you, too. Because I've lived here for 10 years. I've reached out to both of you, and neither have responded. Ironically, all the other council members, whenever I speak to them or email them, I always get a fair response. So, I have my eye on you, Latisha, and I have my eye on you, Joe, because what you did tonight, and all of the positions I have held in a corporate and in a community base, what you did was wrong tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
Rich Green, Faraway Eagle, Shores Vacation Rentals. I would like to address, and unfortunately, I think he just stepped out, we were kind of holding off on this announcement, I think, but maybe it's appropriate right now to just kind of throw it out there. My wife Amber, as some of you know, worked at Bayberry Cottage for several decades as an interior designer before her mother passed away from breast cancer, and she had to take over the family business. So, I, as her husband, have been watching her stressed, because she's not doing something that she loves. So, I've been working really hard to try to get her back into where she, back into her career field and doing something that she loves. And one of the things she loves is the diversity here in this city and the community. Amber, Amber has just scored a huge win with Yoder's Buildings, which is a company out of Ida, Indiana. You see them making the portable sheds that's down here on M43 or, you know, and Blue Star. And Amber, myself, and Yoder's are looking at making affordable housing units together. Amber has started designing some. She has two on the books now, and we're looking at a third. And as soon as the third one's done, we're gonna be moving it to an investment phase, because Shores believes that we have something to give back. Because, yes, Shores has a brunt of the, a brunt to bear on some of the responsibility for short-term rentals, and we kind of forgot about affordable housing. So, we have picked that up, and we're gonna try to run with it. And so, we're pretty excited about it. And hopefully, we can find some investors and some developers outside of Yoder's that will help us bring affordability back into the city. And hopefully, we can find some areas to zone this for and get these made. And we'll talk soon. But I just wanted to address that, because it was something that was brought up several times tonight. But we are, as a corporation, we are looking to help fix that problem here in South Haven.
Thank you.
Nick Kish of 619 LaGrange. Wasn't planning on saying anything, but I got a little irritated. For anybody who's watching and was not here, Mandy Servetus, when she spoke following that, was verbally attacked by the leader of the Neighborhoods Need Neighbors group. And it was called an awful word that a man should never call a woman. So, when two people in the back had to be called out for snickering and making comments, which since I've lived here, we just purchased our house here two months ago after coming back, we've attended every meeting, and the same group sits in the back and makes comments and snickers and comments and comments. So, they deserve to get called out. That's all.
Thanks, Dick.
Hopefully, I'm last. Anybody else coming up after me? No? Okay, good. All right. My name's Sean McHugh. I'm at 429 Superior Street. There's just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. One, along with the affordable housing, we seem to be putting a lot of effort into short-term rentals, all the... short-term rentals all the time since I've moved here. We don't seem to be putting any effort into employment. It doesn't seem that way. It doesn't seem like there's companies looking to come here and start employing people in this area so they can afford whatever house they want to buy here, whether it's an affordable home or it's a million-dollar home. There's just no jobs here. That's one of the reasons why we have to commute. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I would like to address a little bit of what came up with the motion very quickly. I would just like to challenge everybody on the board. Joe brought it up a couple of times, pitting residents against STRs, and he specifically brought up that he's spoken with residents and they have issues with STRs. We stopped coming here because we were being attacked by people. Well, attacked is an aggressive word. We were being harassed. We couldn't go to the grocery store without being talked to. We couldn't even do our lawn, lawn work without being stopped and talked to about how we need to change the way we're doing things, even though we are residents. Back when we did come here, the majority of people that came up and spoke about STRs were not residents. That was, what, eight years ago? Tonight, it seems like the majority of the people that came up to talk about their STR are residents. So I'd like to challenge the board to change their thinking, not make it a resident versus short-term rentals, because we all live here. I'm trying to make a life here. I'm trying to pay off my home so that I can retire here. I'm working damn hard to try to do it, and every time I turn around, what seems like is a done issue keeps getting brought back up because we want to address some issue that was brought up earlier isn't really there anymore. There doesn't seem to be anything to support any major changes in the current rules. So please, change your thought process about us versus them. We're done with that as a society. It's not STRs versus residents, because I'm both, and most of the people that came up here tonight to speak are both. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments? If not, we're moving on to city managers' comments.
I'll keep these brief. Surf Internet has paused their work in the right-ofways installing new fiber cable, but they are going to be continuing to do restoration. If you've had the fiber pulled on your block, you may see that your lawn or your parkway or parts of your road may be disturbed. They are going to be doing restoration work until weather no longer permits. We are all, we are all picking up leaves. I know we've got the one truck that, that's out. We're working seven days a week, so if they're out there, we're on our way. The second thing is, is that yard waste, if you've got the 96-gallon bin this week and next week or the last two days for yard collection by Bestway, after that, you won't see them picking up those yard waste bins until April 1st of next year. So get your yard work done, otherwise you may have to bag it. And then lastly, last week, South Haven Charter Township approved the Solar Farm project for Soul America that we passed last December, so that has gotten its zoning approvals from that end. Lastly, the ice rig schedule has been published. It's up on our website. I know lots of kids should be interested in that. It will be open that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, close Thanksgiving, and then we're back open. I know there's been a lot of talk about lead lines. There's been a recent letter that went out from Shosa. We've got a good press release and an explanation on our city's website. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia. No comment. George.
So I'm a little disappointed in how this meeting went. I'll have to go back and look at the previous meeting, but I'm pretty sure that a lot of the people that voted for Joe's motion also voted to send the zoning ordinance that we had worked on for a long time over many meetings to Planning Commission. And when it comes back, like what we had asked for, and now all of a sudden because of the Better Idea Club, now we got to go back to square one, basically. And this is a priority for this council, and we just, we just booted it. I don't know how many months it's, it's going to be booted, but this is not the way things should go. That's it.
Joe.
The gentleman that said us versus them, short-term rentals versus residents, I hope I made myself clear. I'm hearing both sides, and my job is to try to bring the two together and find a common solution for both. When I clearly said no one's going to lose their license under zoning, that protects the short-term rentals, and there's a place for them. When I talked about regulatory, that was what the residents want to feel. There's some hope that their neighborhoods will slowly come back and the numbers will not continue to increase. No one's going to lose their license. My thought about regulatory versus zoning was to try to accomplish that. The innuendo that somehow I have stacked a deck coming into this room couldn't be further from the truth. Do I talk to city council people? Do I talk to some more than others? But this idea is not new. The whole idea of regulatory has been kicked around for a long time. I didn't know until recently it was possible. So that's, addresses the timing. My only concern is to have this town grow and have both sides of the equation happy, and us all get along, and the whole town grow. And that's what I thought I did tonight. And the idea of the Better Idea Club, you're right, George. If I think there's a better idea out there, I will bring it up, whether it's at the 11th hour or 1 o'clock in the morning, it doesn't matter to me. If there's a better idea, I'm willing to throw it forward, and if we didn't want to do it, we don't have to. And if Kate, you later say it's not doable, then I'll accept it. I'm just trying to help the city work its way through the short-term rentals, and we have been hamstrung for years now with zoning, where we can't get anything done, and it comes up every time. It's so bad that when I tell people, residents, that you cannot take a license away from someone, we can't just suddenly drop it from 400 down to 200, they don't believe it. This has gone on and on. So that's what I was trying to address tonight. Thanks.
Mary.
Yeah, regarding the short-term rental, I mean, I was having concerns with what I was seeing, both at city council and Planning Commission, and that's why I had provided detailed comments to Kate and Kelly, and I had hoped they would go further. And they were shared with everybody. It was in an attachment, and so maybe it wasn't recognized, but they were all shared with you. That does raise issues that were addressed or that I would like to have better fleshed out in the zoning ordinance. Just two FYI, so on this Thursday, there's a workshop by the Planning Commission on the master plan that starts at 5:30 in city council, and for leaf pickup. What I've noticed is the drivers are great, they do a fantastic job, but if you put leaves behind a huge electrical pole, they cannot get it. So if you could please try to make sure the leaves are on the other side, that'll just help.
Wendy.
I just wanted to say thanks to everyone who came out and spoke today. I know that we heard, heard a lot from short-term rental owners, many of whom live here. We didn't hear a whole lot from residents, but I have to say again, I have heard from many residents in my neighborhood and beyond who have brought it up to me without even asking how much, the amount of short-term rentals we have in our town impact their lives, their quality of life, the fabric of their neighborhoods, the charm behind the whole reason that they moved here. And I can't even tell you how many long-term residents spoke to me about leaving because this has gotten out of hand, in their opinion. So all we're looking for is a balance, not taking anything away from you, but we were elected to serve our residents and yes, be fiscally responsible and promote economic development, but I'm going to always do what I think is best for the people who live here. And I think that even though they weren't in this room necessarily, that still carries weight with me and the council, so that's all.
Okay, good comments. My comments, a couple of them. One to Joe's, I hope we never have a meeting that goes till 1:00 a.m. And to Bishop Wilkins, two hours ago, he said, we had a funny look on my face. I think that's probably just a lack of caffeine, because we've been here a while. And then I did mention, the public, I keep hearing weird things about Kate is stonewalling us or Kate is hiding things, you know, and I addressed this, that she was pushing it forward because we were asking her to. We were trying to, to get something done before the moratorium, and then people saying that she prevents us from having information. Well, actually, on October 28th, it was Kate's idea. She got Jeff Sluggitt to come down, and as Joe mentioned, we were able to sit with the lawyers and ask any questions we wanted. We had an hour to talk to him about anything, and that was great. We got, I got a lot of my questions answered, and I wish Cliff would have stuck around, tell him thank you, and Jeff, because they also didn't bill the city for it. They didn't bill the taxpayers for it. They did that because they're good guys. So that was really great. And then my last comment, thanks to everyone that came, that they're still sticking it out, people at home too. A funny thing happened. We had a training with the MML way back, and they were, they said, it's crazy that you give your people five minutes. I said, you know, three minutes is the norm, and they said, well, I can't believe that people use the five minutes. People get so scared to talk, not in South Haven. You guys are excellent public speakers. You can fill five minutes without trying hard. So thank you for your comments, and thanks for always showing up, you know, when we need to get the feedback, and those are my comments.
Thank you. I just want to say there are residents, there were residents here tonight.
Yeah.
I thought you said there, we didn't have residents here tonight.
I think I said we didn't have many.
Oh, yes, you did, and
That is not what I meant, and I said, I know many of the short-term rental owners who spoke are also residents. That is what I said, so do not turn my words around on me.
No.
I understand that this room was filled with South Haven residents.
Good.
Move on, please.
And if you don't know them, I suggest you get to know them. They're still here.
I do, thanks.
Thank you. And I want to thank the people who have emailed me about positive comments about Kate, and I am reading those, and they're just great comments about her leadership, about how visible she is in our community. So thank you to everyone, and yes, I am keeping that in mind for her evaluation. So thank you to everyone, and those are my comments. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.